We definitely want to hear from you.
Shh.
(laughing).
Hey, Brian, the ink pen. Give me the ink pen.
Um, John took mine.
This one right there.
Sorry, Berlin.
Was there anybody else that wished to sign up? Mr. Corbin, you can only sign up one time.
I just want to spell, I want to spell the name correctly. I want to start. I misspelled All Star came. That's not good.
Okay, I did it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call tonight's, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Um, we have Dr. Leroy Bradshaw here from Jonesboro Baptist Church. He would do our invocation for the night. If you would, sir, please come forward. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's morning, somewhere.
That's right.
I'd like to remind everyone here and those in our county. Spring Hill Baptist Church is having their 180th anniversary on July the 6th and 7th. And I would like to bring that to everybody's attention special. That's, that's a lot of years, 180 years. And I appreciate that very much. Let us hear God speak to us a moment. For we are His workmanship, created in Christ Jesus unto good works, which God hath before ordained that we should walk. And then let us pray. Father, we are Your workmanship. We did not create this world. We did not create this universe. It's amazing to see the orderliness of the whole universe. And before time, You had a plan. And before we were conceived in the womb, You had a plan for each of us. And so, Lord, as we worship You, because You give us this day, You give us this meeting. It could not happen without Your allowing us to celebrate and rejoice over You. And so, Lord, may we always be focused upon Your name, Your day, and this day. As Jesus quickly and voiced His opinion when everyone asked about what's for tomorrow. Can we gather manner for tomorrow? Where we, can we have next week? And Jesus says tomorrow has its own things. It is today that we need to pay attention to. So this meeting, Lord, may it be in unity in our county, in our state, in our nation. We have the coming celebration of the formation of these United States approaching. The 4th of July, when we celebrate this nation. May we learn to live in peace even though we may have disagreements. Even we have disagreements with You, Lord. But Your word is truth. It is love. It is our life. And so, we praise You for it and praise You for allowing us to assemble here in this place to talk about the things around us. May we be mindful that it is Yours and not ours. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Bradshaw. Greatly appreciate that. And ladies and gentlemen, if y'all would, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. All right, um. Need to approve the agenda, but I believe we've got a few items we need to add to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if, um, of course, it sounds like somebody's echoing, might be me. So anyway, um, Mr. Chairman, if we could, as far as new business, I have an opioid resolution. I like to put for J five. Basically, what that resolution is stating that Kroger was not firstly, was not in that, um, suit that we're part of that lawsuit. The second, the J six is a employee recognition that I left out.
Okay. Understand why you left it out. We got to keep that a secret until we do it, so.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. If you would, um, board would entertain that. I appreciate it.
All right, board members, is, is there anything else that where we need to amend the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda's approved.
Thank you.
Now, in front of you, you have the minutes for May 16th, 2024. You've had that in your package. If you had a chance to read, if you don't have any questions, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
All right, can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Now, we're going to move on to delegations to the public. Let's see. This is. Which one is this? Oh, okay, I see it here now. Budget, 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 budget.
Okay, I'll see what it has. That's for delegations on this side. Is that right?
Okay. Yes, Ms. Kathy Kingery.
Good evening, Board and Administrator Bowen. I am Kathy Kingery. I live outside of Crewe in Nottaway County as of October 2015. I'm here tonight in opposition to the proposed budget, budget and the $4 million in additional spending. But let me preface my remarks by saying that when I sold software platforms that manage transportation, management, spending, those who are looking to potentially replace personnel with technology relied heavily on data as proof of concept and ROI. Because data removes emotion for hard decisions. Some of you up there are my friends, and I want you to focus on the facts and not your emotions. The data I am about to share is from the U.S. Census Bureau and is available online. As of July 1, 2023, there were 15,556 people in Nottaway, down from April 1, 2020. So while you're planning to spend more on county government in 2025, our population is actually declining. When you extract the roughly 2,500 incarcerated, there are approximately 13,000 who theoretically could share the tax burden. There are 5,415 households, which based on your proposed $52 million budget, is an annual tax burden of $10,000 per home. However, Nottaway has a poverty rate of 21%. 20% are over 65 and on fixed incomes, and 14% are disabled. So that figure is understated. 50% are civilian workers in this county and drive an average of 31 minutes to work, which means 50% are public servants and most likely do not have a 30-minute commute while fuel, fueling up today's gas prices. In fact, six of you sitting up there, of the six sitting up there, four have had long-term careers as public servants and were never challenged with producing a commodity for profit or meeting a payroll. Part of the new revenue in this budget is an increase on business licenses by those who are honest enough to have a current license while this budget redistributes their income to government employees. Employees who, as far as I know, have never had a review are on Cadillac healthcare plans and guaranteed retirement. Would anyone venture to guess how many of those working who are not public servants in Nottaway have retirement plans like those they're paying for? I submit few. The largest revenue source is real estate, and as justification for this tax increase, Nottaway County was compared to eight other counties with similar tax rates. What was not shared, as far as I know, is how many of the counties were compared, that we were compared to, had 2024 inflated revaluations on their homes. What is the average value of their land per acre? What is their median income? What is their percentage of poverty? Is their population expanding or decreasing? Lastly, I was told there was no choice but to raise taxes. Yet, when I asked what cuts were being made to offset increasing the budget, the answer was a question. And I quote, "Show me how to cut when three-quarter percent, when three-quarters of the budget is mandated." The last budget was $48 million. This Finance Committee Administrator could not find any cuts in $12 million besides a 1.7 million in new redistribution. I'm sorry, but only a career public servant would claim that eliminating increased departmental spending in an upcoming unapproved budget is a tax cut. I implore you, also represent the 50% civilian workforce and vote no on this budget. It is unsustainable due to this economy and inflation. And if your five-year plan prevails, some of the aging population will be unable to pay these taxes and lose their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kingery. Appreciate that. Appreciate the information, um, where, where you got that information. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Kingery?
Oh, I'm sorry, I walked away. Well, the precedent is you, I'll get it back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Sonny Abbott, uh, now you, you did check on the budget, but you normally speak at, um, general comments as well? Were you going to speak at general comments, sir?
No, the budget is fine.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Ronnie Arms? And Mr. Arms, um, and some of you others that have signed up, you, you checked general comments and budget. You do have that opportunity to speak at both of those times? Or if it's fits within the five minutes here and you wish to just enclose it, that it's entirely up to you, sir?
Well, because I don't know if I can stay for the whole meeting.
Okay.
Last time I was standing in front of this board, it had to do with hog farms. That's been a many, many years ago. But anyway, um, Mr. Chairman and other board members, I appreciate this. And Mr. Bowen, I appreciate this time to, to share my thought. I don't really, this might, these comments are going to be pertaining to solar, of course. This is the first time I made any comments. I don't really have any, any problems with individual homes and businesses putting panels on their roofs and, or businesses. But I don't want, I don't want Nottaway County filled with massive solar farms with several hundred or maybe thousands of panels covering out the valued farmland and forest lands. Then there's the concern, everyone has talked about, you know, about the equipment. What happens to it when it gets to the end of its life? And what is the end of its life? How long will they last? 20 years, 30 years, 40 years? But my main concerns, and I haven't heard this mentioned by anybody except me, is the concerns with medium and small solar facilities located in or adjacent to existing conservation areas. We have three of those, one in Barkville, one in Crewe, one in Blackstone. And I was on the board 30 years ago when we came up with the conservation. And, and the thought then was, we were having individuals move in here in Gordon Agricultural District by five acres of land and build a house. And then they complained about the farmer that next door to them on two or 300 acres. So we decided, we came up with this conservation district. And instead of having five acres, we had as little as two acres. And this was to encourage, you know, growth to come around these towns and eventually help the towns grow. Maybe the towns would want to take them in. Also, these, these areas were intended to protect agricultural districts, uh, through Nottaway County while enforcing, enticing new and existing people to sell around three towns rather than on those five acres. Hopefully, the special exemption permit in the solar ordinance will help protect these areas. I sure hope so. In closing, I'd like to tell you, I support the proposed Nottaway County zoning ordinance as written. And it's been bounced around and sent around, and y'all discussed it and got comments. But, you know, the time has come to pass something. So vote for it tonight, please. And that ends my solar comments. My, my budget comments just has to do with the rate. I'm, I'm, I'm against the 45 cent per 100. Using that with my new tax, uh, evaluation would, would raise my taxes about 30%. So I ask you, please choose something less. 40 cent would be ideal with me, but anything less than 45. Of course, when you start figuring 40, you know, different figures, when you drop from, um, 45 to 43, it, it moves from, down from 30% to 20%, and even 42, 18%. And 41 is 15%. So anyway, please consider something less. I'm one of those sick people under 65. I won't tell you how many years under 65. That's on a fixed income, you know, and I can get by, you know, for a while anyway. But, um, please consider something less than 45 cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Arms, I greatly appreciate your comment, sir.
If you don't have any questions, uh, sit down.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr.?
I'd like to hear his whole discussion one day, but not today. He was all for agriculture. I wanted to see which side you flipped there.
You have a line of two days, and you bow lunch.
I'll do that. We're going to eat barbecue.
Um, Mr. Hawthorne, was there one in particular that you were looking to speak on or just in general?
Uh, in general.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hawthorne.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rourke. Well, I'm still Robert Hawthorne, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk in front of you yet again. But here we are, we're at that crossroads. And the comments of the last speaker, I find extremely interesting. Please don't raise my taxes to 45 cents. Please don't consider a source of revenue that could allow us not to raise our taxes, um, over 40 cents. In fact, you have an opportunity to open the door for consideration of a revenue source that will allow you not to raise taxes at all. I crunched the numbers yet again on what solar does for the county. Currently, under revenue guidelines, under revenue sharing, under the current tax rates versus what the tax rates would be on the improvements for solar. If you were willing to consider projects throughout the county, every megawatt that you permit will result annually in about $3,140. Now, I base that on general assumptions, but the assumption is that the real estate taxes will be 12 times higher. That's a conservative figure. Generally, the real estate taxes are 12 to 19 times higher. I'm basing this on the assumption that it takes 10 acres to generate a megawatt. Well, that's true if you count all the open spaces that are also included in a solar project that don't have panels on them. True panels, about six and a half acres will generate a megawatt. Uh, I'm basing this on the current revenue that the county gets off of each megawatt of $1,400 a year. And I'm basing this off of the current rates, market rates for siting agreements, which come along with projects of any appreciable size, pretty much to the tune of about $24,000 per megawatt. All right, all this sounds great, Robert, but what does that mean for Nottaway? Nottaway has over 200,000 square acres. Nottaway has lost in farmland well more than since 2012. Well more than the amount of acreage it would take for Nottaway County to generate the revenue through solar projects of whatever size. If you did enough of them, there's more than enough acreage to come up with the revenue you need to meet your looming debt service. debt service. I'm basing these numbers off of a debt service of about 30 million, if all these projects that we think we have to build come to fruition. That was an animal shelter that cost three times as much as hopefully what we're getting ready to spend on it. An emergency management system in the neighborhood of $5 to $7 million. New schools, remodeled schools, whatever Judge Tiefey's going to require us to do on the courthouse complex, perhaps a brand-new courthouse complex. All of that, 3 million in debt service annually should meet that. Isn't that right, Steve? Weren't we anticipating 2 million, maybe?
Yes, sir.
When it also, how do we generate 2 million annually and not increase taxes? Well, basically, with 5,000 acres of solar panels dispersed throughout the county, you have no shortage of private landowners and private developers that want to do these projects at no cost to you. There are no verifiable externality, negative externalities to neighbors or community. I've asked people to come up with them for, what, two years now? And there aren't any. If there were, we would have heard about it by now. Solar has been around in Southside alone for more than 10 years. So if you did 5,000 acres, that's 2 and 1/2% of the county landmass for about a 40-year period. That would generate you the requisite revenue you need to meet all of your debt service and to make this heaping tax increase unnecessary, because that's what you're getting ready to do. If you're going to go with 45 cents per 100 off of the new assessments, this gentleman's exactly right. It's about a 30% real, in reality, increase for most of us on the taxes we pay in this county. You don't have to do that. And I'm not saying this really for your benefit, I'm saying it for hopefully the newspaper's benefit and for the benefit of anyone out here that pays taxes in Notaway County. And so I'm looking at Bill, Dicky, John, Daphne, and Bo. Are you ready to put that burden in this time with this inflation? Are you ready to put that burden on us and not even consider looking at the revenue sources that solar provides that has gotten many counties around us and throughout the state healthy again when they were searching for revenue sources? If it works for them, I don't see why it can't work for us. That's all I have. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Hawthorne?
I do.
Yes, happy to hear.
The 45 cent that you're talking about, the increase in taxes that you don't want to see happen, does the million or the solar people have sort of, some sort of prepayment ability that if we do consider solar because the oxygen in the mire right now? And I don't see any solar being built.
You do, and I didn't, so what's your question? Is there?
My question is, you was in opposition of the tax increase.
Right.
Because we could generate income from solar.
Right.
But we're working on the budget now, the oxygen in the mire now.
Right.
We're not talking about having solar available to us in two weeks and we'd be able to generate income off of it.
Certainly not in two weeks, although.
No, can it be done, and how long can it be done?
Although you've had solar knocking on your door for three or four years, so.
Knocking on Notaway County's door. Not our door, but not, right.
It's not, and as everyone, as you all know, the big project that spawned most, 98% of this opposition, it's untenable, it's not going to be built. It's not even a factor. It never even, never even got an application submitted. But for some, somehow, y'all have let that completely close the door to reasonable consideration of solar projects for your citizens, for your farmers, for your elderly farmers, for any number of folks in Notaway County to benefit from this, from this very low-impact industry. So is there money available instantly? If you permit projects now, the county can negotiate siting agreements. Remember that 24,000 per megawatt that I alluded to? So if you have an 80-megawatt facility, say, a 500-acre facility, you're probably looking at.
Getting a 50-megawatt.
A multiple millions of dollars.
But that's, what I'm saying is, that's not going to, that's not going to prohibit us from having to raise these taxes to make this budget tonight.
Instantly?
Instant.
Perhaps not.
So, having said that, I don't want to leave the public's impression to say that Notaway is holding solar back, so they got to go up on our taxes. Perhaps we could have said that two, three, four years ago, but we can't say it with this new board tonight. To say the reason your taxes are going up, folks, is because Notaway is not allowing solar to come. No, your taxes are going up, folks, because we got to have the money, because of inflation.
Right, and so the solace to the taxpayer is, Notaway County eschewed this opportunity for four years, so you basically got to accept that and like that. Do I like that? No, I don't like it. I don't like that we have lost that revenue source, and I'm particularly looking at the folks that could have implemented it. And do I not? Of course not. Do I like the folks? I love these folks.
We love you too, Robert.
They're great.
Robert, I had one question. In fact, you said times 12, so you're talking about raw land or agricultural land, and then the equipment that goes on it.
Right, the additional taxation above and beyond the raw land taxation, it's by about a factor of 12.
Because of the equipment.
Well, my question is, you said that Notaway County has lost farmland.
Yes, sir.
And then you say we're going to take 5,000 more acres of farmland and lose it.
No, what I'm saying is.
That's what you just said.
No, it's not. What I said was, is that the farmland that has gone out of production far exceeds the acreage that it would take. So if you took the farmland just out of production and put solar panels on that, farm revenue is, not farm revenue, farm productivity is actually up. There are fewer farmers farming bigger farms. I mean, I got.
Technology's got a lot to do with that.
Of course.
They don't do it to mule no more.
Of course, of course it does, like in any industry. It takes fewer farmers to produce more product. So it's a natural progression. But the, kind of the sad bottom line from a sentimental standpoint is there aren't small family farms anymore. And those have fallen by the wayside, but it's some of those same families, Dicky, that want to do solar projects. So it's Dennis Tatum, it's the Folks family, it's the Knight family. So any number of folks who are from Notaway have direct Notaway connections, they want to continue their legacy of Notaway land ownership. But you're telling them you can't afford to farm, and Lord knows you can't. Farm revenue is down. It's in the negative now. Expenses are up, like everywhere else. So the farmland that's not going to be farmed, less than that can be converted to solar, and you can have all the revenue that you need. Is there a short-term fixer? There's got to be, Bo, of course.
We trying to make the day, is all I'm saying.
You've got, you've got to do something, and I get it. And I, and I trust this group, it's going to do the best it can under the circumstances. I said that last time, I still believe that. And you don't have to agree with me, I just want everyone to know there is a revenue source out there that's relatively accessible in the near future that can relieve this tax burden off of all of us.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hawthorne. I had that same question as Mr. Toast, that how long would it take to generate that revenue? And we're, we're in the mire now, so.
Right, are you going to have it tonight? Of course not.
But we're talking about raising the taxes. I heard the gentleman say he didn't want to see his taxes go up, he didn't want to see solar go in. I heard you say, to keep the taxes from going up, consider solar. From what year you talking about? You talking about next year or the next four years?
It could be.
It can't be this year, though. I want to make that clear, that it can't be this year.
It can't be right now, no.
It can't be this year.
But you say, you say that you're in the mire, and you throw your hands up like there's nothing else you can do, but you're a farmer, I'm a farmer.
I was going to ask you, are you attorney by trade or a farmer by trade? I'm a farmer by trade.
He's an attorney, so he can be a farmer.
I'm half, no words on both. But when we get mired down, we know there's a chance we're going to, it doesn't just happen.
I understand.
We rarely just sink into the ground and get mired down. We take chances, we take risks. We've been playing with fire on this economic situation for a number of years.
What do you say, Mr. Hawthorne, for a citizen that comes up to you and reads stuff on the internet that's mostly factual and say that solar is only 22% effective? And then they go far as saying, this whole go-green thing is a big joke, you let another administration come in, in the White House, and you won't hear much more else about it. You know what I tell them? This is what I tell them. We're dealing with it at hand now. That's the only thing I can tell them, but I think they got a lot of merit to what they say.
So, so what you're saying is, what do I tell people when they say that?
It's only 22% effective.
22% or 25%?
That's correct.
28% depending on who you talk to.
Right.
Of course, but every energy source is not 100% effective. None of them are.
Wood, when I put it in my heater in the house, it's pretty 100%.
No, well, it, look it up, it's not.
Lot better than 22%.
Very little, it ain't no 73%. But no, I'm just saying. I understand.
It's still a bunch. And the same thing with nuclear, in fact, we were talking about this coming in, it's depressing every form of energy production. It's depressing to know how much energy it takes to make it. But just because this county is reaping the financial benefits of solar projects is not a, an endorsement or an alliance with any particular form of energy production. I want everything. I want nuclear, I want oil, I want gas, wind, solar, anything that makes my electricity bill cheaper. So just because I'm standing up here or any other solar proponent or anyone that votes for it, is, is in favor of putting in projects that develop material benefits for this county doesn't mean that they're advocating go-solar completely. I'm not a go-green person. I'm former chairman of the Republican Party in Lunenburg County for 10 years. I'm an extreme conservative libertarian. I'm for everything, but I'm also for landowner rights. And if a private developer and a private farmer want to put a project that has zero negative externalities to their neighbors on their property, I don't care what it looks like. It's not for me to determine what my neighbor puts on his land.
I hear you.
That's what I tell people.
I hear you.
It's landon, it's a land, at the heart of it, it's a landowner rights issue.
So you don't, you don't have any consideration for the neighbors?
Do.
You just said you didn't.
If my neighbor wants to put 20-foot pink flamingos in their yard, right up to my property line, they can do it if they want to, if they want to paint their house tutti-frutti. I don't have to like it, but they can do it.
How about if they want to put a hog house 400 foot from your land?
Now you're talking about negative externalities, because what's the first thing?
Is that negative?
Does a solar panel smell? A hog house has definitely got negative externalities.
But a solar, solar panel, I sent a thing in the Blackstone paper here a few years ago where a person just takes out a Blackstone.
You can't believe anything you see in the Blackstone.
Objection, Your Honor.
Overruled. So it had a barn that was throwing a silver light toward this residence, and it actually was true, but the barn was on somebody else's property. As a solar panel could be, deflecting the light right on the.
That's another myth. Solar panels.
So is that, is that what?
They're not reflectors, they're sponges. They absorb light, they don't reflect.
Let's touch back to that hog house just a second. But you moved to agricultural area of the county, but you tell me it stink, just as that gentleman said back there a while ago. And I got a feeling he's in opposition of hog houses. It's the reason I want to get him a barbecue.
Am I, am I in favor of hog houses? Yes, I am, because I grew up around agriculture. Frankly, the smell doesn't bother me all that much. We, you, Mucks Babels, and so have I. It doesn't bother us. But I get it, I understand people, it can be so heavy sometimes, it's just, it's offensive to many people. But that's a negative externality, like anything else, like a factory that puts smoke in the air. That's a negative externality.
And gentlemen, I, I love this open banner, but we really need to move along.
I will close this statement about this to you. One of these board members asked me, how would I like to have 1,000 acres of solar next to me? And my response was, I wouldn't, unless it was on my land. And I, and I won't say any more of that.
It's happening to many.
Unless it's on my land and I get to benefit from the go-green, because that's about all the go-green it is, then I wouldn't be in favor of it. But thank you, Mr. Hawthorne.
Would you be in favor of lower taxes?
Absolutely.
All right, gentlemen, all right, hang, hang on. Mr. Caldwell, you're actually up now, and in any cross-talk with the public, I'd ask that y'all have that conversation in private, please. But Mr. Caldwell, you're up, you're up now.
Thank you for.
Thanks, sir.
Well, my name is Stuart Caldwell. I was up here last February, and I was talking against solar because I, you know, if they need 5,000 acres of land, and they can get 3,000, but the other 2,000, they don't want to turn loose, how they going to get it? Eminent domain? They're going to take it? Anyway, that's another story. This tax increase of 20% on top of the assessment we've already had, and the 60% personal property tax that's coming in on vehicles as soon as we get this one shoved at us. And no one knows what's next. I don't know, somebody's had a rumor about a five-year plan. But y'all really think the people in Notaway County can afford that? We're a rural county, we don't have that much population, and we're trying to keep up with Parklyre, Abramall, Fairfax, Chesterfield. I don't understand how we're supposed to survive. Y'all say you're in the mire, we're already in the mire. Most of us are struggling from paycheck to paycheck. I know I am. I'm making it on what little social security I get and a state retirement check, and it ain't a whole lot. And now you're going to come in here and raise my taxes out of sight after they've already raised the value of my land? I have two acres that are landlocked at the back of our land. We bought it at a tax sale because it got poured in there. That assessment raised it from $2,300 to $4,700. Now you're going to throw another 20% tax on it, on that $4,700? So how high is my taxes going to go? You know, the car, price of cars hasn't gone down, price of vehicles haven't gone down. But you're going to throw that 60 cent back on there so that we're paying on a price from, that's extreme and outrageous for what it should be. Because I know I just went and looked at a new truck, and it was $71,000, and that's for the stripped-down version. But we just, we can't afford it. Can you look in the face of the people that elected you and tell them that we're going to put a hurt on you? We know you didn't have anything to do with it, but you got to reap the reward of it, and here it comes. Can you look the people in the face that elected you and tell them that? That's all I got to say.
Mr. Caldwell, if you don't mind, sir, I want to get back to something that you alluded to, you talking about a five-year plan. It is something that has disturbed me. I have not spoken personally with the self-proclaimed chair of the Finance Committee in weeks. The chairman of the Board of Supervisor has been left out of those conversations. Okay? I did miss a meeting. However, weeks, weeks, folks, and I have not been talked to. And I understand you were told that someone told you that they didn't know anything about a five-year plan. Well, there absolutely is a five-year plan, and I'm disgusted that that was not brought forth before now.
In place.
Yes. That five-year plan was to include, starting your, raising your personal, your real estate taxes at 43, 48, 50-some, 50-some, and then 61 cent over the next five years. I have been quiet to let this thing come to fruition, and yet someone sits up here and talks about transparency?
Oh, no, don't, don't even go there.
And that was never brought forth to the citizens. So imagine my surprise when we sit in here at a public hearing and I see that the personal property tax rate is now going from 315 to 375, and I had no idea about it. I am just as disgusted as you and the rest of them are, that's why I'm a no-vote on this budget.
I, I, I'm sorry I missed the other meeting, I was in Florida taking care of some problems due to a death in the family, but I found out about this Tuesday at the polls, and there's quite a few people that are upset about it. So, you know, you can pass it if you want to, I'd look at one term, that's probably all you're going to get.
And I appreciate Mr. Coleman and the newspaper printing the information, and I understand, not everybody reads the newspaper, I understand not everybody looks at Facebook, I understand not everybody looks at this. It was properly advertised, but this is not what needs to be done. I don't know why.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know, Mr. Chairman, what does need to be done, because I'm at woe, too. The numbers that I've looked at, and we've all looked at, that I'm aware of, countless days, for me in particular, as bad as I do not, and I've said it here at these regular board meetings, do not want to see these taxes be raised at all with this new reassessment. I have not figured out one way to keep that from happening. Now, we talk about a five-year plan, as I said, we trying to make this year, we've got some things going on such, out at the LRA, some, some holes that can be fixed, some Band-Aids that can be put on, that may have, should have been put on 12 years ago, maybe should have been put on 20 years ago. But they didn't get done, so the fact of the matter is, we dealing with, with that hand.
Right.
And I don't want, I do not want to see the taxes go up. As a matter of fact, I've never been a braggart, but I would be willing to say that I'd be one of the top 10% real estate taxes in this county. And we talking about Cadillac insurance? I can assure you, Bo Toth don't have any Cadillac insurance. Because I said by trade, I'm a farmer. So I feel with these folks, but they got to understand that $72,000 stripped-down pickup this year, pre-COVID, was probably, I know what it was because I bought one, was a $40,000 pickup. So we can't, we can't operate without, we've got no other choice but to raise these taxes.
Do with the help.
Do with a what? Tell me, do with a what?
Do with the help. We look for me doing with the help.
I'm with you, brother. Me too. It kills me. It kills me. Not to mention the rental houses in the community that they're going to have to up the rent on them because they no longer cash flow because they paying. And what about if you live in the corporate limits of any three town? You got to pay two real estate taxes.
Oh, yeah.
Two.
Yeah, I did that.
I'm telling you, I know.
Well, and, 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 and I feel you, Bo. But when you have people put in place to decipher this information back to you and it's not coming back to you, there's a breakdown in communication. And because of that breakdown, I am not putting it on these people, sir. I never will.
I feel you. I understand what you're saying.
And at the end of the day, I don't understand why the departments were not pushed to cut their budgets 10 or 15% before coming down with these numbers.
If we don't, if.
You fellas.
I didn't catch it.
I didn't either.
What's that, sir?
Steve, he was around here whenever doing that.
It's awful that it came down to this. It may have should have come down to it years ago.
This is financial committee, let the cuts.
I can say that.
Okay.
We did, in fact, Mr. Bowen sent out a email to all departments asking them to cut. Ms. Rock and Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry you feel like I am ditching you. I offered at the last public hearing to meet with you over this and you and I both are busy. We go to work, I've been staying up till 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning reading budget information. The phone goes both ways, sir, but I offered to meet with you. We have poured through the committee over 100, what was it, Dicky? 120-some hours we put in pouring over this. We have looked at it every which way but loose. We got close to a $53 million budget that 33 million of it is the schools, which is state and federal funded. It only leaves 9 million left, which over that, we have to match with a local match because of the LCI that's beyond our control with $6 million. We, we're working on revenue sources. We inherited a mess. Y'all have heard us say that. We have poured over this and I'll give you an example. Mine went up 29%. Say your house was valued at $150,000 in '24. With that 29% increase, it goes up 43,500. If a real estate tax had stayed at 48 cents, your tax bill would have been $720. If it stays at 48 cents with the increase, that makes it 193.5, your tax bill's going to be $928. That's $195 more. Elderly people, it's going to hurt. But $195 is not going to create someone going to have to sell their house.
No, because those type folks don't live in. Most likely not though. No, you don't know that, but, but if a person lives in that sort of type of house, if $195 was going to make him lose it, he was going to lose it anyhow.
We're not talking to people at $190,000 houses. We're talking about people in $60,000 houses, $80,000 houses that are living on government's assistance, have come one check to the other, they don't have enough food in their refrigerator to make three good meals. That's what we're talking about.
That's what I'm concerned about and we as a board are.
And to continue that, of our budget, that's 53 million, the total collected for personal property and real estate is $9 million from the taxpayers. The majority of it comes to us, am I correct, Mr. Bowen, from federal and state agencies? Some local sales tax, some fees, but we're in a bind. And I want to know how many people, all I've heard is cries that they don't want solar. How many of you want to bite the dirt and let us get solar in here so your taxes don't go up?
Again.
How many of you, I see a bunch of you over there that hate solar, don't want solar. How many of you are willing to let us go ahead and do that so your taxes don't go up?
Tell me what this is about.
Your taxes are going to go up.
They're going to go up.
I said again.
Wrong question. I mean, seriously, you got, so you throw it up in people's faces that.
But no, I'm not pushing, I'm not pushing the solar supporters, but I'm using that as an example.
They're still in the meeting and they do the same old thing.
Sir, I will, I'll give you a chance to speak. You're fine. Let's, I understand there's a lot of emotions in this. I'm hot to you. But we, we, yeah, but we need to try to keep this with some decorum and civility here and I understand when you get into people's pockets, this is an aging community and we can't forget that. There was facts presented to us early on by Ms. Kingery and that, that does not fall short by me or the board members either. But at the end of the day, last week, Ms. Norton, when you offered to have a conversation with me, it was already done. I didn't need you to sit down and tell me like I don't understand what's going on. I know what's going on. I don't agree with it. So there was no conversation you and I needed to have. Those conversations should have happened before work session. So.
Can I make a comment? I was on the budget committee, okay? We had a former county administrator work with us. I appreciated all he did for us. If you look at the things that we are faced with, because of the reassessment, which we had nothing to do with, we had to do it, I want everybody to understand, the tax rate in Nottaway County stayed at 48 cents for six years. The assessment in Nottaway County stayed the same for six years. What happened during those six years of inflation? Take a look. Take a look. It's like we're talking about buying a truck. Things have gone up. Expenses of the county have gone up. I mean, you know, we looking at, because of the reassessment, we've got over 650,000 extra dollars we have to give to the school system. That's state law. It meets the.
They're down and over, shut down.
Well, what I'm saying is that meets, that meets state, we have to do that. We don't have a choice. We have to do that. We've got, what is it, 400,000 that we're losing on the landfill?
Yes.
There's another one, another big one, the jail, the jail 400,000. So you're looking at 6, 14, 1.4 million dollars that we have to spend. Where are we going to get it?
1.4 is a whole lot of difference from that.
Well, I mean, it's a whole lot of money that we are required that we have to do.
My question, Dicky, is where did the money go that we have?
Well, what I'm saying to you is there was no increase in the revenue. If you, if you keep your.
Over a.
Over six years.
But, you know, we're flat broke all of a sudden.
No, we, we know about it now. We didn't know about it then.
But the school's up $800,000 over that 48 cent period.
And if you look at, if you look at things from a standpoint of, say that the supervisors over the last six years had raised the rate one penny a year, how much income will we have, you know, had come in? Right now, we're looking at one penny gets us $120,000.
That's right.
Okay? So I just named 1.4 million. If you look at our budget, you can see how much we're taking out of the general fund and the LRA to try to balance the budget, even with the tax increase. So, and another thing that people don't understand, when they look at our dollars and they say, oh, you got $20 million in the bank. What they don't understand is almost $8 million of that is, cannot be touched because that's landfill. We have to keep that money in reserve for 30 years?
Yes.
We have to keep it. We can't spend it because if something happens at that landfill, that's the money that's going to have to be used to clean it up. So we're, we're sitting here looking at growing expenses and we don't have any extra revenue.
And you're looking at people out here.
Exactly right. Hey, look, look, I did a little figure tonight to do it. If a rate was 45 cents, my house, by the way, went up 99%. My tax will be $846.63 more this year than it was last year. And you don't think, I don't like that. And I went, look, I went to the equalization board, I don't know if you did or not, I went to the equalization board and I had one little piece of property, it's .48 acres. I paid $600 for it, I don't know how many years ago. It's a little strip of land, the widest point is 30 feet. It's assessed, it was assessed at $5,500.
I know, they did the same thing.
And I went to them and I said, look, I've been paying on $3,900 for a right good while. So they backed it up to 3,900. So I mean, you know, we're all facing it. It's not like, it's not one or two people, everybody's facing it.
Mine went from 23 to 47.
That's what I'm saying.
And I like to say too, that the federal government tends to hear on elections and stuff about they inherited certain things. We did inherit certain things, but I'm not about to run the previous board down.
No, no.
It's our obligation to fix what we, what we knew about. Perhaps, perhaps they wasn't very informational to each other or as we were.
That's right.
So we, I don't know them circumstances, them situations. I just know what's at hand right today and it's awful.
Exactly.
Responsibility to take care of.
It's awful what we got to deal with right today.
All right, so.
Another thing I'd like to interject is that we are having to take 1.2 million dollars out of our general fund to pay the bills and we cannot continue to do that year after year because, and our advisor told us this, Dicky, four years, we'll be broke.
You can do it one more year and you'll do it.
But we have identified the leads.
I wanted to consider that.
We call them hemorrhages. We've identified the hemorrhages. We've identified some revenue sources. It's not going to stay like this.
All right, and just, I want to, to Dicky's point, it's not that I'm sitting up here saying we can't raise taxes. Those obligations to the school and stuff, there was. We're going to have to. That's not there. But what I'm saying is I don't agree with this amount. I don't agree with this amount and I stated it sooner and I talked to, Dicky and Mr. Collins and I have had really good conversations this, this week. And I get it. I understand there's some plans, but the only plan we have right now is the five-year plan of tax increases. If something changes, that changes.
Well, I, you know, I saw that plan put on chalkboard.
Yes.
Okay? Nobody said that was going to be the plan. It was just put up there saying, if you don't do something now, this is what's going to happen.
That was never a plan.
That was never a plan. It was something on the board that was shown to us, if you don't do something now, this is what might happen. We're trying to do something now.
Right.
So we don't have to do that, but it's not, there is no plan. There is no five-year plan about what we're going to do. There is no five-year plan. There's a one-year plan and we're trying to get that together.
We'd be better off with a five-year plan.
Well, I mean, if we could make it work.
95% versus 20%, that's not as hard to bite as you can.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Had there been a penny a year increase, it wouldn't have been bad, but we're now.
What Dick is speaking of is that five-year plan that was on the board.
Right.
If we didn't do nothing, John, I heard, Mr. Chairman, I heard you say 63. I remember seeing 63 cents per hundred was in there within the first three years, I think.
That's true. You don't know what's going to happen in the next five years. Everything is not predictable.
No, it's not.
Exactly right.
And so what, and what I'm saying, and what I'm saying about that, the only thing that has been presented to me, the only thing that was presented to me as an option, if other things happen would change it, was those five years of tax increase. Okay? That's what was presented to me and it was, it started at 43, went to 48, it was 50-some, 50-some, and then 61. That's what was written on the board.
Or 63, I think.
Yeah. It could have been, but I thought it was 61. But at the end of the day, we're working, like you said, to make a plan. We're hoping some of these other things come through. But in the meantime, if it don't, that's the only thing that's been presented to me.
Let me ask the what-if question.
Yes, sir.
What if the rest of us said we're not going to vote for this budget either? That means we got to back up and punt and find some funds that, that I can't seem to find.
That means you, you will not be able to write checks as of July 1st.
Sort of like a federal government shutdown for Stepford County. So what I'm saying, if we say no, then where do we find the funds to write checks as of July 1st?
You have to do an appropriation for two months worth of bills.
But so you're just kicking the can.
That's right.
Still got to come up with it some sort of way or another.
It'll come out of the general fund.
It's going to come, yeah.
Lead it down to nothing.
And then you're broke. You're bankrupt at that point or pretty close term.
And then the, like I said, the only difference in all of this is if we land some of the things we're looking for, the economic development, the.
Well, that's what I'm hoping to keep from having to go back up next year on.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. If the plan, our plan is to get stuff in here so that we don't have to do it again. But right now, we kind of backed in a corner.
Right.
John, we got another one on delegations of the.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I see Ms. Yates with a hand up. Is she on the?
She not on it there, so.
I'm on the list, but I don't want to speak, please.
Go ahead. Let her, Mayor Payne.
Keith McCurry.
Just make us speak for me. I decline, because what I wanted to say was already said over and over. I figure you're all going to make your decision anyway regardless of what was said.
Yes. Mr. Caldwell, can you speak? On my place, Mr. Ducey. Go ahead.
What, sir, well, just, just for procedural, it's always good for the citizen's voice to be heard, regardless if it's, if you're repeating what's been said a million times. I would much rather you stand at that mic and say your piece and, and, and be fulfilled with what your, what your cares and concerns are. And Ms. Yates will add you in.
We'll put you on.
Get the people off the list first maybe and then add her in, Mr. Chairman. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Keith McCurry. This is the first time I ever came to one of these, I missed the meetings and I also am a retiree and I'm, I'm from New York. I came down to Blackstone. I fell in love with it. Beautiful country. Taxes, perfect at that particular time that I can afford on my retirement. And yes, within the last six years, we haven't had a raise or anything of that nature. I understand that the government has to function, they have to pay bills, but during that six years, it would seem to me that someone would had to know that the money that we had saved or the golden goose, whatever you may call it, was getting kind of low and nothing was said about it during all of that time. Now, all of a sudden, all of this money that we supposedly had is no longer there or it's there and it's dwindling. What was the supervisors doing during those times to see like, hey, who's doing the budget? Who's keeping an eye on the checks? Who's keeping an eye on where the money is going? Nothing, far as I know, was said about it. So now we come to this time now where we find out that we're in a jam. Bills have to be paid. We don't have enough money. And who that falls on? It falls on people like myself, retired, many other people that are retired and trying to make it through each day. And I do understand that the county, they, they need money to survive. I understand, but it could have been done in a much better way than it did, that we just found out a couple of months ago that we're going to get hit with this 20%. This could have been brought a couple of years later saying, hey, man, it's been already three years and we know this, this and this is happening. But it didn't because people was paying money for whatever reason and nobody was checking. But then we're going to be the ones to get blamed because we have to pay that money or you want to make us pay that money because you're going to raise our taxes, you're going to, you're going to assess our homes for more than what they're worth so you can get your money. That's not fair to us. I say that right there is, I understand everybody wants to get a raise, everybody wants to I understand everybody wants to get a raise, everybody wants to get a paycheck. Everybody wants more money because that's what the country now is, money, 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 no matter what. Inflation, blame it on inflation, blame it on inflation. That's why we gotta increase this. I underthink, I understand things are getting, um, higher and higher and things are more expensive. But it's not getting as expensive as you're making it where we can't afford anything. I mean, we go, we buy milk bread just like anybody else. Yeah, it's a little bit expensive, but that's not a main reason why you have to hit us with this tax. I'm not gonna stay on the tax for that long, but a question that I have that I wasn't too sure of, and, um, this applies to you, Mr. Bowen. The budget that I, 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 I noticed that, um, they have listed here for last year, I believe it, it was, um, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and fourteen. That was the budget for two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four. Now, that money right there, can you please explain to me, because I'm not sure what that means? Is that your salary?
No, no. What line item is it talking about, Mr. Chairman?
What line item was you?
Like I said.
What, what's your, what's your line?
I only read.
Second one.
I only read.
Should be, should say administration.
So I'm looking at it and I just see the administrator, the budget.
So that's.
So when I'm looking at.
That's all the employees.
Oh, there, there's all of the employees.
That's the phones, that's the postage, that's, that's to run the county administration.
Okay, so that, that means that, um, that's for the, um, accountants and everything that draws up the budget and stuff of that nature? Okay. I wasn't sure about that. And I was saying, okay, you're looking to increase, that's almost based on what I have here, that's like almost two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars more for, for the administrative.
Mr. McQuerry, can, can I?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted.
Answer that question for you.
Get as close as I can to it. The five hundred and seventy-one, four fourteen, the 2023 budget that was, uh, was proposed and voted on and passed did not include, and, and, and they, what they ended up doing, like in, I think, and, and, because I went on the board then, but I think sometime in August, they gave a two percent or five percent.
What happened?
And then in December gave another.
They did it. The state did.
The state did not get their information down on us, so we adopted this, and then they had changed the raises, comp board raises and stuff like that, and we had to, uh, uh, compensate with that too on those mandates. And that's the reason why it's showing here now, because.
That's why it looks like it went up so much. They, they got a raise after the budget was approved. Two raises, five percent and two percent, the whole county administration staff. We, we board, I think, dressed up the same thing. After taxes, I get three hundred and eighty-four dollars a month. That's my, that's what, that's what they pay me. And I think that's pretty well the same for all of them.
It's, uh, thirty-one thousand for the year.
For all of them.
For, yes, for all of them.
For all of them.
Not each.
All of y'all, right.
That's right. It's thirty-one thousand.
That I was able to do, I, I, I got that part, but I wasn't sure about, um, the administrative right there because I didn't, I never hear anything about the employees or anything like that. It just has, you know, Mr. Bowen's name there, and so I'm like, okay, well, what's going on here? But anyway, um, um, there has to be a way. And I, I, I know that, uh, Mr. Ingram, you said, um, there's no other way or no other, there, there has to be a way that we can do this. I mean, you say, you say if we raise it one, one penny, that brings in a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay. One penny. Let's raise it. One penny.
But what about if we need fifteen times that amount?
Well, let's, let's, let's look at all the other funds that we have underneath there that we can cut one penny, two pennies.
If you go down to the, uh, debt service, that was cut by forty-three percent, two hundred and thirteen, eighteen thousand. That's two pennies almost. That was cut.
Okay, then we have to find.
But then if you go back up, then if you go back up and look under clerk of the circuit court, that increased by thirty-five percent, a hundred and sixteen thousand. That's another penny. I've been dealing with this stuff for days. Numbers is my favorite. Paying taxes isn't. And increased taxes certainly is, because we all know we gotta pay a certain amount of tax. But it's sort of like a phone bill. My phone bill, or this, this used to be fifty-nine dollars. It gradually went up to one eighty-nine a month until I cut it off. Now I gotta live without satellite TV. But that's a royalty. It ain't like a house that you need. I get it. I know exactly what you're saying. I'm a, I'm a country sticks kinda person. I know what you're saying. But if you can share, if you can share some light on how we can make it work one-on-one, I will sit down and talk to you and give you any information which is, which is open to the public that you would like to see. And I'm, I'm open to talk to you about it.
You know, it, it, it sounds really good, but being that you're pressed for time, you're talking about you gotta have a budget within the next two weeks.
Let's do it for next year. Let's talk about it for next year. I know. I understand, man. I know.
But like I said, you know, you're, I'm pretty sure you're probably, you already got your mind made up and meeting this here just to go through the motions. That's, that's all it is, to go through the motions.
This is the second, this is the second public hearing we've had on the tax increase, correct?
This is.
The first one, nobody showed up.
That's correct.
Nobody showed up.
And so.
Well, two people did, but two people did. I'm sorry, two people did. Which I will like to say, Chairman Roig, I really appreciate, appreciate you talking to this man to get him out there, Chad.
Yes, sir.
Because he said some really helpful stuff. It's one more voice. It's one more person that thinks the same way. You, you said that Ms. Abbott was gonna speak with you. I wanna hear her too. It's one more person to talk. It's what, what Supervisor Collins encouraged. He said, I wanna see a big turn of this thing.
What was the term? Pack it.
Yeah.
Pack it. Get up here and speak. That's, that's, that's the most important thing.
And sir, I want to clarify too, as part of the finance committee, you mentioned cuts. We cut 1.7 million dollars out of the department asked. And we also froze, what was it, Dicky, fourteen?
Sixteen, I think.
Positions, sixteen positions. And while we're talking about freezing.
They will not be hired.
Positions. The county's here to provide services. We all know that. Emergency services, court services, social services, all that. When we freeze positions, we're impeding our services. But we did make cuts.
But when you, but when you speak about those cuts, uh, Ms. Norton, those were requests. They were not cuts. People were asking for 1.7 million more that was denied. We didn't cut, I believe the intent is to level fund the previous year.
That level fund, but a lot of those requests was, and I ain't gonna say all of them, but many of them was legitimate. Yeah, public service, like social service, stuff that I, absolutely, if we'd had the money in the bank.
The thing.
I would've said, yes, we need them services.
The thing you need to look at, you know, revenue is one thing, but if you look at the expenditures, that's the ones to compare and then look at the revenue. We got revenue, and really, if you look at the revenues, pretty level except for the real property taxes. Uh, if you look at, uh, sales and use, here's what happened. For some reason or other, the sales and use tax was counted twice in the previous budget.
Now, can you hear Mike?
Revenue. So there goes half of your sales and use tax that didn't, was not collected because it was counted twice.
It was personal property, Mr.?
Personal property.
It was a personal property, okay. Well, if you look at.
The sales tax was overestimated.
Right. See, and if you look, if you look at, uh, what we did was, local sales and use last year was estimated at two million dollars. We didn't take in two million dollars. So you can see, we cut the estimate to one-six-five-oh. So you gotta look at, when you're looking at expenditures and you look at revenue, where's the money coming from? Where did it, you're asking, where did it go? You can see where it went. Because all you gotta do is look at the expenditures and what was budgeted for last year, okay? And if more was spent than what was budgeted, then we're, we're in the bind. And if you balance your budget last year based on figures that are not correct, this is what happens.
Two years in a row.
Two years in a row.
But we can't put a freeze on everything this year, or for this budget. Maintain the budget that we got right here, put a freeze on it, and then we can try to figure out some other kinda way that we can get the money.
Schools up six hundred and fifty.
Gotta be some kinda way to get the money.
Schools up six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Excuse me?
Schools up six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's up?
Jail's up six hundred thousand dollars.
Six ninety-four, forty-eight percent the jail is.
Yes.
Forty-eight percent. And the meth head's still walking around.
There you go. Looking for Dr. Pop. So what, what he, what he's saying there, uh, Mr. McQuerry, is that that mandate from the state, oh, was seven hundred thousand dollars to the school, we have to pay it. As I understand it, and if I'm wrong, please someone interject here. As I understand it, because the value of the properties went up, we must pay that additional to the schools. Even if the enrollment is down, even if they cut half their staff out, none of that matters. It is a, we have to. And once you're talking seven hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna be easy a five, five and a half cent increase there. And that's the reason why I said, this, this whole thing is, I'm not opposed to this whole thing. I think it's too much. That's what I'm opposed to. The tax, the taxpayers have paid in to a general fund, and I get it. I get it. You cannot keep going in the general fund because you have to sustain a certain amount, okay? But y'all put the money in there, go in there. Go in there as deep as we need to go right now and take care of the citizens, lighten this tax load, and let's continue to work on economic development. Let's continue to work on these, uh, projects that we got, that, that potentials, uh, with, with land, timber, and some other things like that. That's, that's why I'm, I think this is too much. And that, and that's why I'm at. But, but I wanted to explain that to you, sir.
I appreciate that very much, and I agree with you one hundred percent. I wish everybody else would.
If it's a school, the school's on it. If it's still looked at as a school, but there is some.
Do those schools affect the, the amount of state mandates?
No.
They're just going by the high school or what else?
They go by the enrollment.
The land value.
And they go by the assessed value. Right, and, and the assessed value of the property in the county. So what it, it's called, Stuart, it's called ability to pay. And if your land value goes up, the state assumes your ability to pay has gone up. See what I'm saying? And they tell us, this is what you've got, you've got to match this number. We don't have a choice.
You think I'm like the one you really need to talk to?
Well, talk to the state government. They could help us.
Okay, and Mr. McQuerry, if, if you didn't have anything else, I was, I was gonna, uh, go ahead and move forward, uh, with, with the, with the, uh, next speaker.
Okay.
Um, and will you?
I'm good. I'm good. I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Yates, while you're coming up, uh, Ms. Payne, you had a question?
Yeah, I just have something to say about, I didn't sign up. I didn't know that the government.
We'll let you, we, we put you.
All right, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you come up, okay? No, 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 uh, after Ms. Yates.
Hi, I'm Sue Yates.
Really?
Seldom am I in the corner of the board, as you all know. And I have heard everybody tonight, and so I'm, and I'm just talking from my heart. I'm talking from, feeling for everybody in this room. I'm gonna be seventy years old in December. I don't want my taxes to go up, and nobody in this room wants to. And nobody in this room can afford it any better than I can. I'm, I'm betting, except you. But at any rate, um, with that being said, I want to commend this board for doing what they have done with this budget. And it's hot, it's big, it's a change, but it's what needed to be done for years and years. We are suffering right now as a county from the result of past bad decisions and not raising. I, I was appalled when I found out that, um, our, our property had not been reevaluated for six years. I come from a thirty-two-year background in real estate. So I know about appreciation. I know about property taxes and how they go up, but to do it every six years to me is irresponsible. There is no way that six years ago, anyone, even if you guys had been on the board, would have known that our economy would be in the place it's at today. And we're all suffering from this economy in our groceries, in our gas. But I don't, I'm not so sure that I think we're suffering with it in our housing. Maybe our housing has finally hit this, been evaluated for what it truly is worth. I'm not sure, okay? So I made a bunch of notes here. I think the question I wanna ask the, I guess, the public, but I'll make the reference to y'all, is can anybody in this room live off of their wages of six years ago under our present economic catastrophe that we're all feeling? I have to tell you, I could not do it. I could not do it. So for the citizens to ask the board and the county to do it is an impossible task. And it's time that we finally, that you guys finally get a grip on what's truly going on in this county financially, okay? I, 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 I watch, and I'm not gonna choose this evening to say it, but we still have a few bad decisions that have been made from you guys, which I won't go into tonight. But it's not over this budget. I think you're truly doing and looking at what you can do to keep everything as even as you can. So, and, and, um, I will say one thing, and, John. Grandstanding that you're not gonna do this, that you're not gonna go along with this is, is, is not a good thing, okay? I understand. I, I totally get it. If anything happened to my husband tomorrow, I don't know how I would pay my bills. But I'll figure it out. Okay? So let me make sure that I, um, have met all the, the points that I wanted to make. And one would be, you know, one of the things I know you're all suffering from right now is the lack of maintenance to our infrastructure. I mean, for forty years, we haven't had anything done. This group is trying to get something done. We have a judge that's breathing down our throat right now to fix up a courthouse. Why? Because nothing was done in the past. Uh, we can beat that dead horse, but it's not gonna do us any good.
Nope.
What's gonna do us good is to have an active board like we currently have to fix it. So we can do all the things we need to do as a county. That's how I, you know, so I feel like that. Let me just look at my other notes. I think I've said almost everything. Finance meetings. How many finance meetings have been held with people?
Dozens.
We had a five-hour one.
One of them was ten hours.
We've had several.
Many.
We've had several, yes, ma'am.
Have you been to those finance meetings, John?
No, there was a committee appointed for that.
Okay, but you're the chair of this committee, I mean, of this board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And this, and I appointed a committee for that, and if a third supervisor show up, it becomes an illegal meeting.
Yeah, I know that. Another recommendation I can make that might make the citizens feel better, I know it would make me feel better, is, and I fail to understand why boards, councils, whatever you're sitting on, don't involve the, the public at the beginning of the process, or more at the beginning of the process than at the end of the process. Because having been on council, as I was for two and a half years, I had to approve budgets and blah, blah, blah. And we always seem to re, we invite the public when all the decisions have already been made. And I think if you really wanna be transparent and you wanna really hear the public, hold those meetings earlier so that we can talk. But I, that's just my thought, okay? Anyway, I think that's it for tonight. I wanna thank the board for the hard work you have done. I, I, I dread the increases, but I understand them, and I personally will do what I have to do to pay. Thank you guys for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Ralph Westfall. Mr. Westfall, while you're coming up, I, I just, I just wanna respond to something Ms. Yates said. If grand, if I'm grandstanding by saying no to this, give me a bigger stage. Give me a bigger stage. I'll grandstand and say no to this every day, anywhere. Mr. Westfall, go ahead, sir. Ma'am, ma'am, the speaker is speaking. Ma'am, the speaker is speaking. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Not speaker, I'm just a county citizen. I've lived in Nottaway for over seventy-two years. And I could go on about I'm on a fixed income, blah, 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 but you know, now I think eighty percent of the world is, if you get a paycheck, you're on a fixed income, so that is not relevant. But what is relevant? A twenty percent tax increase to citizenry is uncalled for. It's, there is no reason, and I don't, you can have a list this long and you will never come up with a reason for a twenty percent increase on citizenry. Because you can't, what if everybody I knew came up and said, Ralph, you owe me twenty percent more? The same inflation that hit Nottaway County and the prisons and the schools hit Ralph at home. We eat, instead of eating hamburger, we eat hot dogs instead of, we do without. Hoover said, do without something, do without something. And I don't think the schools should be exempt from cuts, and I can't believe the state mandates that they can't do that. And I don't know anything about state government, but I can't believe that. Ms. Norton, you said a hundred and ninety-five dollars ain't gonna hurt anybody. That's a government answer if I've ever heard one. And it's ridiculous. Ms. Toth, you said, well, gosh, if we don't get this budget approved tonight, then what we gonna? then what are we gonna? So you had your whole budget prepared on some, implementing something that hasn't been approved? Sounds like a darn bad plan to me. There's gotta be, what this young gentleman said, there's gotta be things you can do, places you can cut, things you can do without, because we do that at home. When my budget fails me, I don't have anybody to call and say, hey, look, could you send me 20% more? And you shouldn't have that option either. It's not fair. And I don't think there's anything else to say about it. It's irresponsible and it's simply not fair to the public. And I know y'all got a rough road to hoe, but you can't get your money from the public. The federal government wants money from Ralph, state government wants money from Ralph, and now the county wants more state money from Ralph. Everybody wants money from Ralph and Joe and Fred and Sue and everybody. And one day, the, there oughta be 500, there oughta be 1,500 people standing out there. And what y'all need to, I can't tell y'all what y'all need to do. But if it was me, put up a website, put up a Facebook page, put these issues on it, and tell people, reply, and don't reply with something this long. Say yes or no to the budget. And count yeses and nos and say, well, look, this is how many numbers we got. It's simple mathematics, and it's simply, simple way to get the public involved without him having to come up here tonight, stand in line, and wait till somebody orates for 25 minutes when it's supposed to be five minutes, sorry, board. But I'm done, I appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westfall. Mr. Oliver.
How y'all doing tonight?
Good evening, boys. Lovely, how you doing?
So everybody's came up here and said everything they gotta say, and that's fine. So I have a couple of suggestions, and I hope that maybe y'all have thought about this. If you have, first and foremost, six years, that's too darn long. And that's me rethinking the words that came out of my mouth before I said that. It's simple, six years, you're gonna take a big hit. Anybody that knows anything about MAP knows that. We know that real estate market, prices of vehicles, the economy is gonna fluctuate, not on a daily basis, a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, an annual basis. And there are things that are gonna change, no matter what. Politics, the world, heaven forbid we have another world war. God in heaven knows what that'll do to our economy. So here's my suggestion. I don't know who pays for the assessment. I don't know if that comes out of the taxpayers' money. I don't know where that comes from, and that's, I'll find out eventually. Don't ever go six years, go two, maybe go one. And Mr. Ingram, you mentioned, hey, one penny a year, then to two pennies, then to three pennies. You've inherited a problem. Right now, you're trying to find a now problem, a now solution for a now problem. But at the same time, too, you need to prepare for the future. So that's one of the many ways that you do it. Other thing I'm gonna say is solar. I support you in what you're doing as far as the current solar plan that you wanna put in place. I'm hoping that maybe that will prevent certain things that people talk about with regards to eminent domain and other things. But anyone that says that there are no evidences out there whatsoever of what solar farms have created when it comes to sediment runoff, I recommend all these board members, Mr. Bowen, you as well, sir, to go and speak to anyone on Louisa County Board who was there in 2021. And why don't you ask them and those farmers about how their land was flooded due to the solar farms and the sediment runoff? Why don't you go down into Alabama and Georgia? Talk to people that work on the Chattahoochee River down there. If that sounds familiar, Alan Jackson wrote a song about it in the nineties. Everybody down there, where they flooded it out, it actually came out of one of the creek beds. These are families that live on their boat houses out there. Not only that, they have oyster beds. There's an open channel out there where they shrimp. That all affected their lives, because everybody forgets the one thing, and that's the human factor and the human failure and mistakes that are involved with all these plans. You can have great money, you can bring in all this money. It might solve a lot of problems, but just like you said, Mr. Toth, when's that money gonna show up? Two years from now, three years from now? Is a solar company gonna come in here and say, all right, guys, you know, we predict if you give us 5,000 to 10,000 acres, that, you know, over the next five or six years, we might make a bunch of money, but they're not gonna give you a $5 million check? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oliver, one thing too, that what you were talking about, sir, about the thing, I don't wanna speak for any board member, but I believe the consensus of the board is to move this thing back from six years to four years. And in a conversation Mr. Collins and I was having last night, we talked about you never know what might change at federal government. Let's say there's a major change at the top level, and things start coming down. Well, you have to look at a situation then and say, okay, we're being required to pay $700,000 additional to the school. Do you spend $250,000, that's roughly what the assessment costs?
That's about $250.
Yeah. So that's for everything.
Right, right. So if you spend the.
Paid for by the taxpayer.
Yeah.
So if you spend the $250, it might save you $450. You see what I'm saying? Because that's money you are now extra spending.
Correct.
That we're being required to spend. So it really depends on, I guess, how the economy's going. And Bo and Bill have a major input and knowledge in what's going on as far as real estate. And so we're blessed to have that knowledge here. And, I mean, as it's ongoing now. And Dickie as well, from working at the bank. And so what we have the ability to do is say, okay, do we pull this money out? Quarter million dollars, go ahead and do another reassessment now, because it could help. So that is absolutely on the table and being discussed. And I appreciate you bringing it out to the public, because that is one of the things that if we hadn't have been thinking about it, well, we damn sure would be now. So I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the finance committee had taken a look into that, too. And what, going back with planning, like Mr. Oliver was speaking of, what we need to do is budget $60,000 for reassessment for every four years, and it doesn't hit you all at one time. And you earmark it, make it obligated funds, and then we'll have it ready for the fourth year, so.
And we're also working on a blight ordinance, and I think the goal is to look at possibly August. That's gonna change some of the face of our biggest revenue stream, which is real estate.
And one other thing, too, I know everybody's missing the general fund. I know I kinda stepped away, and I appreciate you letting me readdress. You know, we are currently, right now, I mean, looking at a major change, not at state level, congressional district level, and federal level, where this year involves elections. And everybody knows that elections can have big changes, especially in the way the economy runs. Maybe as a suggestion, I don't know the numbers well enough. I am very good with numbers. I learned it from my granddaddy making me count cattle, but sometimes twice just because he wanted me to get out of the house. But, and I haven't looked at them, maybe we can sit down and look at them. I might have a little time in the next couple of weeks. But if there is a possibility temporarily, pull from the general fund. If it is a temporary, right now, solution that doesn't hit the taxpayers as hard.
We already are.
And at the same time.
That's happened the last three years.
Hasn't.
That's a problem.
And we already are this year, too, correct?
We are, we're hitting it.
Yeah. Three locations.
My suggestion was just to do that, and let's see, come next year, what we're looking at. Because, I mean, even right now, in our congressional district right now, we still don't know who's representing the Republican Party. So once again, maybe as a suggestion, if it's a possibility, it's a slight, maybe not hit it at 60 cents, maybe make it 44, 45. Just for right now, it's a slight increase, pull a little bit more out of the general, see what the economy's gonna do. Because let's be honest, no matter what happens between now and, I'll say, January, February of next year, when certain changes do take into effect, there will be a change in the economy, good or bad.
It's gonna change.
It's going to change. So just a suggestion.
Well, thank you, Mr..
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Payne?
I did not intend to speak. I don't have an opinion on solar. I don't really want my taxes raised if they are, since I pay town and county. Then I'll have to do what I have to do to do that. I'm sure most of you know I'm mayor of Crewe. I'm trying not to speak as mayor of Crewe, but I can't change who I am. But I was saddened by y'all's interchange earlier. That's what I was saddened about. It's an elephant in a room that nobody addressed, and I was not gonna leave this room tonight until I spoke on it. Transparency isn't only with the board and who's out here. Transparency is between all of y'all. Do I agree with everything that happens in Crewe Town Council? I get aggravated sometimes because people be talking, and I don't know what they're saying, and I get aggravated. And I'll, what do I do? Text. Okay, what's going on, I wanna know. So I'm not gonna throw you under the bus, Chairman Moore. I'm not gonna throw you under the bus, Supervisor Norton, either one of you. But you need to be talking to each other.
I agree.
Before tonight, before this room, before these people, when there were more important things to be discussed, and you were going at her, and she was coming at you to defend herself. I don't know who's at fault, but it was no place for it. I like you both, you're my friends. It's a glad to get up here and say that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. All right, board members, we are now going to the public hearings, the Comp Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment. Mrs. Ody.
Well, this will be real, this will be real quick. What we have before us tonight is the Ware Conference of Plan, General Land Use Map Amendment. This parcel is located at, kind of sort of the apex of Melody Lane and 360. It's currently zoned conservation residential. What Ms. Ware, who's unable to be here tonight, she's, I spoke to her yesterday, or emailed her yesterday, and we conversed a bit, and she's in Ohio, which is a huge, I'm really disappointed to hear. But regardless, what she is seeking is a change in the land use, the future land use map. Currently, her property is identified as industrial. What she's been doing on nearly 300 acres for generations has been farming. She wants to keep it farming. And in order for her to do that, she needs to change that future land use to ensure that her property remains agricultural in use. Like I said, it's zoned conservation residential. But conservation residential does permit agricultural activities. So what she's seeking is to change the industrial designation for the future land use map to conservation. And I, as a staff member, I highly recommend that. She wants to put her property in conservation easement is one of the requirements. Because if she kept it as industrial, she wouldn't be able to put her farm into the conservation easement per the state of Virginia Open Door. Out, uh, thank you. Thank you, sir, even though you're from UGA. Anyway, but I did hear from a number of property owners, and they were property owners who was, who were not familiar with the comprehensive plan or how the comprehensive plan works. And so I took some time to explain to them what the request was. They're concerned about the impacts on her property. There's no impacts on adjacent property. She's simply maintaining her current use, and she wants to keep that well into the future. The Plan Commission heard this on May 21st, and they voted unanimously with a 6-0 vote to recommend approval to the board supervisors.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If y'all don't have any questions, and Mrs. Ody, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the Future Comp Plan Land Use Map Amendment.
I so move.
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the future plan, the Comp Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment? For or against? Hearing none, board members, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I so move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Board members, if anybody wishes to make a recommend, make a motion to approve or deny this.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve it per the Plan and Commission's recommendation.
And I second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all. All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next public hearing is the fiscal year 2025 budget, which we've heard a lot, but to do this correctly, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget.
I so move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now open. Mr. Sonny Abbott.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, but I'd like to introduce the public hearing before he comes up, just to make sure everybody understands. The proposed levy for the general county purpose on real estate is 45 cent per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for tangible personal property, the exception of household and kitchen furniture vehicles without motor powered, used as mobile homes, boats, or other watercraft used for business of pleasure, $3.75 per 100. I'd like to take a, just stop there for a moment, because the comment has came up about going up to 3.75. If you look at your revenue sources, if you look at your revenue last year, personal property was 3.7. Even going up with 3 to 75, you're still gonna get less than you got last year, 3.5, because these vehicles' assessment is going down. So we got those numbers from Kristy Hudson. Proposed levy for mobile homes, 45 cent per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for machinery tools, 135 per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for general county purposes, merchants' capital, zero, zero money for per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for farm machinery implements or equipment, it's still zero per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for motor vehicles, especially equipped to provide transportation, physically handicapped individuals, 2.3, $2.35 per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for aircraft, $1 per 100 valuation. Proposed levy for emergency services volunteers on one vehicle, $1 per 100 valuation. The finance, take a small break there. The finance committee did not give the funds that they requested by the emergency services. They were level funded, and we're trying to figure out other ways to assist them in any way we can. Notice, the proposed tax rates, for consideration of Nottaway County Board Supervisors, may be lowered as a result of the public hearing with adoption of this budget. Also, if you would look at your revenue, going back again, because as Mr. Oliver had asked, to balance the budget, we are taking, if you look at local redevelopment authority fund trans, reserve transfer, that's $193,650 that we are pulling from general fund to balance. We're also pulling out, because of solid waste in the landfill, the losses we're taking now, And to, and act the general fund to overall balance everything, another additional 1 point, 1, 1,280,940 to actually balance this budget. So it's close to, I guess you could say, 1.4 million dollars to actual, taking out of general fund to balance the budget. The, before you open, and Mr. Ingram is right, it's been six years since the tax increase. Just for instance, people say, well, we did 48 cents for years, and we didn't have to pull from the general fund, that's not true. In 2020, we pulled $736,000 to balance the budget. And we had a couple of projects, because asking, a couple of projects, it wasn't even in the budget. And as you can see, local sales tax on the revenue was estimated as $2 million last year. That was not a solid number. The number was actually 1.6 million dollars. So the other thing I wanna compliment the finance committee in working with Tammy Rayford. If you look at the line item that says revenue from use of money, we had a couple CDs that was getting devaluation. They were getting about 300 and some dollars a month, when they could have been getting $6,000 a month. So that's, we have made some changes with the, because interest rates have gone up, and so we're hoping with that keeping on, we'll go from $150,000 and to $350,000 for another revenue source. So we're taking, take a look, and they're working closely with each other to assure that. Mr. Chairman, that's the introduction to the budget, and I appreciate you letting me have time.
And on the personal property tax, where you said we were taking a loss, it looks like it's $130,000 roughly, loss.
Right. Even if you go to 3.75.
Okay, all right. And then in 2022, the rate was dropped to 3.15, and to level fund, it should have been like 2.95 to 2.90. So, yeah, so we have gained each year over that, even though it's showing a loss there. There was, there was still a significant gain, okay.
Good point, good point.
Mr. Abbott?
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm gonna, I'm not sure, like, really where to begin. So let me try this. 12 years ago, this is what was in the newspaper. Now, not all those red marks, those red marks are mine. And those red marks suggested that we put in the proposed budget. And those red marks suggested that we put in the proposed budget along with the previous budget, because 12 years ago, you only put in the proposed budget. I asked 12 years ago that we put in another column called the actual column. What did we actually spend? And they told me, well, they really didn't say anything. Y'all have talked more tonight than any board has ever spoken in the history of Nottaway County.
Is that good or bad?
That a compliment or criticism?
Well, I think it's just a statement of fact. So what I'm going to ask, well, and you are, I've said this before, you can't tax me out of the county. You can't raise my taxes so high that you can drive me out. I might leave, but you can't drive me out. What I'd like to see, what I'd like to have the county do is when you close the books in 2023, and that should happen in July or August, publish those numbers against the numbers that you have on this document. Because what the citizens of Nottaway County never know is where did you spend it? Now, I appreciate that Mr. Ingram gave me a document I spoke on last month. If you look on one page, it says you're short 3.5 million. You look at another page, you're short 2.5 million. Apparently, we're short 3.9 million. Okay. How big's the reserve? What's left? Y'all have to know. Please don't tell me that I'm going to go back to my seat, and you can't tell me what's left in the reserve.
So you want, you, does anybody have that answer from Mr. Abbott?
The estimate right now, Mr. Chairman, with the 8 million obligated is, is 16 million dollar, I mean, 16 million dollars with the 8 million obligated to the landfill. So you're looking at 8 million dollars possibly in the reserve until we close out those books, as he said, and see what we spent last year. We know that we spent 500 or 400,000 dollars for a project that was not even in the budget. So I don't want to make, I'm not going to give you fake numbers. I'm going to give you real numbers when I get them.
Right. Well, I appreciate that. But the citizens need to know, because last month, I said the golden goose was dead, and I don't think we brought him back to life yet. Because at one time, what, and some people didn't call that thing that we got from Robinson Farmer Cox Group on audit, that it was some kind of analysis that said we had 20.6 million dollars. And then you start subtracting this, that, and the other thing, and be, you know, and we have 8 million dollars set aside for the landfill, but we keep doing things. Now, I can go through the budget and point out things that were in the budget last year that I said, and I use this term, there was one line item that I said was laughable. My problem was, is that yes, it was laughable. There was $14,000 spent more in the first two months than was budgeted in that line item. But there was 10 months that was unaccounted for. Was there ever money appropriated from the reserve to cover those missing line items? Answer to that is, no. I know the answer to that. If we could get the data, the analysis, then some of the questions that were asked here tonight would be answered. Now, because I've been a resident of Nottaway County for a lot longer than I've sat on that one board that I sit on. But I can tell you, when you subtract all of those monies that the state and the federal government provide to that other organization, except for the local composite index, your budget is smaller than their budget. And you want to know where to save a little bit of money? You'll smile when I say this. That other board gets paid less than you get paid. Yet they deal with a larger budget. You can save a few bucks. But you can smile if you like, because.
Does that other board get a whole lot more state money than this board does? I'm not familiar with board you speaking of. Oh, you're talking about the school board.
He was trying not to say it, but.
All of the, the revenue that's on these documents, revenue and expenses are equal when it comes to what the school gets. Save the LCI, the Local Composite Index, and that's five items. That is, I'll pull it together. School doesn't decide what that amount is. The state decides what that amount is, and the state tells this board what that number is. School doesn't have anything to do with it. But most every citizen could understand that if they attended one of those board meetings, or two, or every month. But I, I strongly suggest that we need to know, when the books closed, what numbers matched, so that you could look to the future to say, hey, we were over here, under here, we're, here's how we, this is, you know, we can understand what happened. Because if you don't understand it, we're going to guess next year. Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Abbott?
I think what he's referring to is the actual from the 2023, when it actually closes in comparison to the projections of the, of the expenses and income. And I think that would be a pregnant idea.
And they, they did finish the actual reconciliation today for 23. So we could do that. Sir?
Your taxes. It could come from interest on CDs, it could come from your tax, tax, it could come from.
Sale of real estate.
Yeah.
Um, it's unexpected, I guess you could say it was unexpected revenue. So it goes in there, it's not part of the budget, it's not part of the expense or the revenue. It's built up over the years, and now we've begun to. The last three years, the last three years, it's been about 6.5 million dollars.
Can I just hear, if y'all just closed the books and audited the books on FY23? And it's like now, we're going into 25?
That's correct.
I found out that that's government, buddy.
No, no, sir.
That's what I, that's what I've been told.
Can you address? Finance director changes, county administrator changes.
Well, see, 2024 won't close till June 30th.
That's correct.
That's right.
You're just closed 2023.
And there's a reason for that, and I don't, Ms. Norton will say that or not, but.
So we did get, and I don't, I'm not making excuses for anybody, so I came, I came in on January. I might be getting ready to learn something.
Right.
And came in at the end of January, and Ms. Rayford was the treasurer. When did she come? I'm not exactly sure. I was, I'm not on the board then. But anyway, then, and then we had a new finance director at that time. What's taken so long to close the books is how you put that money in, how you put that money in the bright system? How do you, how do you label it? And we're trying to straighten those things out. They, they worked five days, 10 hours a day to, just for the month, to finish up the month of June. They stayed five days worth of, so now we're hoping we can see, get things moving again. But you have got, the, the county's numbers and the treasurer's numbers has to be exact. And, and we just got there.
And the treasurer has to file a report. When is that, Steve? It's coming up soon, that, that they reconcile and match.
And we actually.
Staff, staffing changes.
Staffing changes.
We lost our, our financial director, and then lost him again. And then we hired a consultant to help, changed, changed county administrator three times.
So when should it, when should it have been done? When should it have been done? I told you I was trying to learn something. Yeah. What month should it have been completed? Oh, that, I don't see. I, I would say by August, September. Right, August by September.
So we should have closed June 30th for 23.
Right, so August, September, be a fair, be a fair statement, because you got.
Worked 60 days from closing.
Right, because you got money, this, I see, Ms. Martin, Dr. Martin, you say you got money still that they're paying bills in, in July that they did, they got, they might have a purchase request that was put out in June and May. So you really, you gotta, you gotta, after they close that out, you gotta put that back with the, with, with budget it was supposed to be spent in, or carry it over.
It's kind of like a shell game. They move it place to place, but during this process, and Dicky can reiterate, we have identified a lot of areas that things were inappropriately coded or processed. It didn't change the bottom line, it was just put in the wrong place. So we're fixing it. So going forward, I like Mr. Abbott suggesting that we will be able to print a actual to show what we're doing.
So now that that's been reconciled, how, how long can, can that actual number, a week, 10 days? I don't, I, I mean, I don't know, because we're trying to, now, because we're so far behind, Mr. Toth, and I'm not trying to give you an answer, but let me give you an answer when I get, talk, when I meet with my staff, because I, they, now they're reconciling July, August, September, October. And, and remember, in October, what's changed then, we started letting, paying the schools monthly. So that's changed the whole chemistry of what. Yeah, but I'm talking about 23. I know, I know that, but, but I mean, I, so I, I rather, I'm trying, I'm trying to get them to work forward, to catch up, but I'll, I'll do the best I can to get that, that number and so, and just put them, and maybe it might be a simple thing, is just put it beside each other, and the Bright System will do that for us. If that's the case, then we should be able to do it in a day, you know? But if it's not, let, let me find out on that. I don't, I don't know enough about that part to, to give you an answer tonight.
Do we need to get the Bright System to write new queries to make this simpler?
Oh. Yeah, I don't, you know, Mr. Chairman, I got, I, we got a person that we have brought in from Lunenburg County that we're, that is coming in to assist us with the Bright System, who, she knows it very well. She worked for the treasurer's office, had come out of retirement. Actually, I didn't find her, Philip Van Norbeck found her. And she has been tremendously helping us learn that system as they go, as we go along, okay? Today, Logan Presley spent all day with the treasurer's, in the treasurer's office reconciling, all day. I never even seen him.
So what I'm saying is, do we need to be giving you guys some additional tools? For any additional training or anything that we need to do to get y'all what, what you need?
I've had, I've had meetings with the staff, and maybe this is another time we can talk about it. I had meetings with the staff. At one time, I think Mr. Costin was going to send them somewhere in Tennessee to, to go, and I, and I said, look, stop that. Let's see if I can get somebody from the Bright System expert to come in and do a two or three day training. Take the office, take the conference table, put six computers around now, put the expert in the middle of them, and y'all, and stay at it, you know, and I'll be in there with them.
Teach them.
Okay, so that, that's the thought next fiscal year. But I got, we got to catch up. I got to catch up.
Any other public speakers?
Yeah. And that's what I was going to ask, is, is there any more? Because I know some of you have signed up for both, but is there any more people to speak for or against at this public hearing? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Damon. I'm actually a resident of Blackstone for less than one year. So I don't know any of you. None of you are my friends, and you don't know me yet. Blackstone knows me already. My husband and I are retired military, so we've lived in many different places, many different areas. So I've been taking all this in, because the tax rate, amongst other things, as well as the rural nature of Blackstone and Nottaway County are why we came here. We have never been against paying taxes. It's one of the wonderful things about the United States of America. You don't want to pay taxes, you don't want to pay a lot of taxes, but if you go to a heck of a lot of countries outside of the United States, they don't have some of the things that we do. It's part, it's one of the things that we have to pay for, is our society. And we are woefully ignorant of the blessings that we have. That being said, I've been on many, many, many volunteer boards. We have budgets that are way less than what you're dealing with. And I'm not going to poo poo anything that you all have done, I don't know what you have done. And so I, I'm not going to speak about what's happening today. But what I'm hearing is that there's been a lot of mistakes made by people who have been sitting in your positions prior to you. So going back to all of the many, many volunteer organizations I have sat on, you talk about, you have, you are mandated to pay X amount of bills, you have no choice. My volunteer organizations, we were mandated to have our budget ready for the next year and audited from the previous year by an X amount of date after that year. And it seems like every organization that's going to be taxed or held liable by the government has to have their ducks in a row, 1, 2, 3, or we get in trouble. Everybody except the government, the United States government, and apparently, the county government. Why is there not a date where you are responsible for making sure that that previous year's budget has been, not the budget, the audit and the final figures are, been taken care of? I understand that at the end of your fiscal year, you're going to have at least two months of bills coming up afterwards that are still going to be clearing the bank, et cetera. But if you're telling me now that it is halfway through 2024, and you are just finishing 2023, I as a, I as a person could not do that with my budget. I would go, I would go to jail if I handled my budget the way I've just heard the county has handled their budget. If I was that far in debt, I'd be in jail, or I would have nothing, or I would have lost my home. Why can't government do what you tell the citizens we have to do, or we get in trouble? That gets me really mad. I'm not against raises, I'm not against fair income, fair salaries for work. So I'm, again, I know taxes have to go up. My husband and I rely on our military pay, we rely on my husband's social security, and we look forward to our annual raise. We're not going to give that up, we don't want it to go away. However, again, the government continues to tell us inflation, we have to cover our bills, we have to do this. But until such a time as the raise the government is giving us, after we did our time for the government, how can the local government say, well, your taxes are, however, are going to go up 10 times more than the raise I just got for my budget? So I've heard, I just, we just found, the first thing we got when we moved into our new home was we got a new assessment on our property. Oh, well, we, we got a good deal luckily when we bought it, we're counting ourselves lucky. But if you already had the assessment done, which means your revenue is now going up, and then you're raising taxes on all of us on top of it, and I am one of the few, my husband and I, that have to pay two taxes, first town and county. The tax raise on top of the assessment, I think, is what all of my new fellow residents are fussing and complaining about. I don't, you've talked about how if they had maybe done 1% a year, or this much a year, or now doing the assessments more than every six years. Those are all great and good things. If this budget is passed, when does the majority of the money from this new tax program start being collected by the county? My taxes aren't going to be due until December is what I've been.
That's correct. That's correct.
So that's six months. So why can't you pass a lesser increase? Because it's going to be months before you're going to see any of this income anyway. That gives you six months to do something else, to find a little bit of that extra money, until we find out what does happen in October with our elections, until we do find out what happens with inflation, until we do find out if what you are working on diligently is going to pay off to bring in that revenue. until we do find out if what you are working on diligently is going to pay off to bring in that revenue. So I'm not against the increases. Actually, like Mr. Rourke said, I'm way against the amount of the income, of the raise, and for all of those reasons. So that's two cents from a newbie who's been taking all this in.
Mr. Chairman, will you give me an opportunity to address some of her questions?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The first one, I have the same question. Administrator Bowen, what is the timeframe on, is there, is there a mandated timeframe on, on the reporting?
You wait, to approve a budget? Is that what you're asking? But I'm.
The annual, the actual.
Yeah, the actual from the previous year, close date, and to approve a budget.
I heard. To approve a budget next Thursday is, that's it. June, it is state mandated. We have to, and if we don't approve a budget, then the state will come in and they will make us have a budget.
All right, what about looking back on the 23? It's not, nothing saying when that has to be legally done, such as filing your income taxes by April the 10th?
No, I don't.
Nothing there?
I don't.
When do we have to account for, when do we have, is there a date that legally we are supposed to account for the 2023 expenses and income?
She's asked, when do those act, is there ever a time that those?
Not that I know of, not that I know of. But, but it's bad, it's bad accounting.
Well, good business says you have 60, 90 days you done.
Right. It's, it's, I don't know if it's a.
The second, the second part I wanted to address is, the reassessment value, to get the same income that we, we were getting as a county, we would have had to equalize the tax rate to 37 and a half, I think it was.
That's right.
So it was 48, and we'd had to go to 37 and a half. So we didn't leave it at the 48. It was proposed on that board in there that it go, I think, to.
43.
No, it was, it was way, way more than that.
No, I'm saying the first year, this year.
Oh, yeah, no, this year.
43, 48.
Well, the percentage up this year ended up being about 20, but 29 to 33 is what, what, not to pull out of general funds, what they said we needed to do.
Yeah.
That, that's.
Yep.
29 to 33 percent. So, so we lowered it, the proposal, we haven't lowered anything, we haven't taken a vote on it. But the proposal is, is 45 cent rather than the previous 48. But to get it to where I really wanted to get it, really wanted to get it, is to pay the same thing with the new reassessment, would be 37 and a half. Ideally, if we was a really financially strong county and had a lot of economic growth coming in, and we could have done that. But a lot of things has prohibited us from being able to do that. So.
I understand equalization, and I understand exactly what you're talking about, the assessment and the amount of money. And, and there are laws that you have to have it at this, or else you have to do, you have to do exactly what you're doing as far as public comment and putting it into the budget. So I, I understand all that. But there's still an increase on top of the value.
Oh, it absolutely is. Another thing I've learned.
That's what it's, at this point, why can't it be one or the other? If the assessment's a done deal, then, then go with that and perhaps the.
Not do the reass, not do the assessment and increase at the same year.
Correct.
I got you. Well, another thing I've, I've learned is if the county acquires a debt, such as a line of credit, my question to a bank was, is what do they use for collateral? Me being a business owner has to have collateral, right?
Correct.
The banker said the county doesn't need any collateral because they do a moral obligation. If you don't pay us our money back, you have the ability to raise the taxes on the taxpayers to pay us our money back. So hearing Mr. Abbott say you couldn't run him out the county, probably not. He had a pretty strong job for a lot of years. But the average person, you could. Put this county in enough debt that they can't pay the debt back. We have to increase the taxes. A lot of folks would have to pack up and move away, and that'd be horrible.
Correct. I agree.
And that's something I learned. I try to learn something new every day.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
This way.
Read it right. One of your questions, we do, and I got this from the treasurer, we have to report the state by November our trial balance in that fiscal year. And we went by the auditor's trial balance last year because we couldn't balance due to not having a finance director. So we use the auditor's trial balance.
Is finance director a paid county position?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is now a frozen position.
Correct. At the same time, though, again, if I did that, I'd be in jail.
I'm with you. Me too.
But there, there are code allowances because of that, and because we went by the auditor's trial balance, it was allowed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, ladies and gentlemen, is there anybody else here that wants to speak for or against the proposed budget? All right, seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. All right. Departmental reports, is Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bryant did send me an email and said she has got a prior engagement. And if y'all, if you, if any of the board members have any questions, you can email it to me, or just write them down, and I give it to her, or you can send it straight to her. She apologized for not being here.
Yes, sir. Um, the, you got anything on the Leach outside?
No, just the, the water's below the liner, and we got some hot weather coming up, so that's good news for Leach, but bad news for farmers.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Collins, conversation you and I had would now be the appropriate time to have that about the, the study information.
For the landfill?
Yeah.
Do we have anything to discuss? I mean.
Well, about the request for the information.
We'll have a discussion with the board about it. It's been since August?
Yep.
We've not received the study. Did you figure out whether we'd paid an invoice?
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's what we, part of that information we wanted to know. Because just like the project that was.
Is not funded.
That's right. Have we already paid for any of this study by them? Because my concern is, they do this study all the time. Why cannot someone come here and present this information that we need?
We need to, we need to go ahead and give them a deadline.
Yes.
If we have to hire somebody else. I mean, we're talking about $400,000 loss.
Right.
Right.
That we're trying to stop.
So he's given, I mean, he's given me, I don't have the dates in front of me, I don't have my calendar, but.
They need to go ahead and be hard dates.
Okay, but we can do that. And he, and that, and that, and that can, but, you know, the guy left that was in charge of it, and I couldn't.
I know.
I got you. But, so I hear two parts of questions here, I think. Are you saying, have we paid TRC yet for the study?
Yes.
I don't think so. But I'm gonna check into that.
We don't wanna lose, we don't wanna lose money.
If it did, because y'all hired him before I came on, right? Of that, right? Okay. So I'll, I'll look at that. Okay.
And then let him know we need, this is, this needs to happen.
Okay. We, right, so, so, so let's say it does happen. Okay, I mean, let's happen the next month or whatever. We, we get it right. What are we gonna do to, you know, this is something we need to talk about in finance, we need to figure it out. What are we gonna do about stopping the bleed if it takes three or four years to get it done?
Well, I think the, the initial conversation was that the transfer station can be built in a year's time. So every month that they are not here giving us this information that we can present, that's just another month putting us behind.
So did I just hear, if they don't, they can't get here, we need to hire someone else? Did I just hear that?
No, they need, I'd say we need that information.
Didn't he send an email saying he was, he couldn't come tonight, but he'd come in July?
He can come, he can, I think he could have come the week after July, the first, he could come the second week in July, was that right, Matt?
He's scheduled for August 1st, same as LRA's meeting. He said he would come August 1st.
August 1st, anyway.
All right. So. If that's, if that's a hard date, then I'm satisfied with that.
Let's get him in.
Yeah.
Well, he understands, I mean, this is, you know, that's 12 months.
Yeah.
It's $400,000.
Right, right, I got you. Okay.
So.
Oh, and by the way, I think we need to make sure the towns are invited to that work session.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're paying for it. Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowles is not here. Y'all, that information is in your packet along with the animal control and Piedmont Health District. Now that we can't elaborate. Anything from the school board? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Bowen. Speaking on behalf of Dr. Groms, this evening you could not be here. But she did want us to express, to express our continued appreciation of the continued support for the school system. We are currently working on our office, summer office hours, so we work for 10s instead of the traditional five days if anybody needs us as we are gearing up for another school year that will start very soon. Also, summer school is starting July 8th through the 18th. That runs Monday through Thursday, and that's a full day summer school for us. And we hold it all here at the complex. Our back to school parking lot party will be on August the 12th. If you have not attended, it's a great time when all of our families from across the county come together at one location to celebrate the return to school. And also, that's the same day as back to school convocation for our teachers. So we would love to have you there and for you to join us at that event. And so, like I said, we're just gearing up for a new school year now, just switching everything over, so. Thank you all.
All right, well, thank you very much. In the next reports, Economic Emergency Services, all that information is in your package. Is there anything that needs to come forward for the board on any of those? Okay. All right. Mr. Shane is not here. Do y'all have anything on the LRA that you need to speak on? Okay.
Did you, was anything, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you say anything for emergency services? Did you have anything?
Yes.
I don't know if your buddy or.
I just have one thing.
Okay.
I know he had mentioned something to me.
I knew you. Can I enter and just hand this to you?
Sure.
Okay. This is, this is the heat index we want all of you to have a copy of.
Oh, yeah, cooling shelters.
Yeah.
Cooling stations.
I think, I think Mr. Bowen, members of the board, chairman, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Bowen, thank you for having me up. Just real quick, that's the heat index that runs through Thursday, and I just wanted to let you know real quick, you know, we've been monitoring this all along. It looks like Sunday is our bad, our worst day. Saturday's gonna be hot as well. But I talked to all our staff, we had a virtual meeting today, and if we have to open a cooling center, we will be opening the, probably the crew library on Sunday if we need it. Now, Saturday, keep in mind, and I've already posted this on our Facebook page, let everybody know that on Saturday, if someone needs to cool down, they can go to any one of the libraries on regular time, and we don't have to pull any extra staff in. So those times, by the way, are in Blackstone and Crew from 10 to 2, which is gonna be the hottest time of the day. And, and we'll just evaluate it at 2 o'clock, see if we need to stay. And then in Burkeville, it's from 9 to 12 noon. And we know that noon is, is still not very hot yet, but it's, it's getting there by 2 o'clock. So anyway, what I'm saying is, we do have the libraries on Saturday. Now, the, the cooling stations, we have those already set up in a plan. If we need to activate those, we will on Sunday. But right now, it looks like, if you look at that heat index, we're gonna be at 103 on Sunday. And typically, a heat advisory doesn't happen to 105. So what I use as a trigger for being able to, to open one up is look real seriously at where the heat index is. But we also look at, what's more important is, in Notaway County and in South Side, Virginia, is what is it doing at night? If it goes three nights and it doesn't drop below 85, we got a problem. And that's usually what we base it on. Right now, it looks like our nighttime temperatures are gonna be 75. So we know it cools down at night. So we're not in a really bad situation. Way, what you're gonna see is, look at the heat index for Richmond. What you're gonna see on all your news for anybody listening tonight, WRIC and WTVR, WWBT, all of them will be showing, showing a heat advisory with a really bad index. That's gonna be Richmond and Petersburg. If you look there, you'll see that. They're gonna be at 106, 107. So Notaway County will not be 100 on Sunday, I mean, Saturday, 103 on Sunday. Just wanted to share that with you.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
No, sir.
We're on top of it. And Department of Social Services is gonna be staffing these centers if we have to open any of them. But the library staff will take care of Saturday. So that's all I had. Mr. Chair, I did have one item that I did not mention. I think it's at the last part of your packet. I worked with Mr. Roger Reynolds this week in the Virginia Poultry Association to acquire free PPE for the avian bird flu. So Department of Health had contacted me. I immediately contacted Roger, who I've known for years. And he said the poultry association could probably use it. So he hooked me up with Trent Johnson, Trent Roxy Johnson. So I went on and ordered all that online. It is free. And then last night, we had a really good grain bin rescue class in Crew, put on by Farm Bureau. And what I'm gonna do is, is try to work with Farm Bureau, and I only work with Mr. Toth on this, is try to find a way to acquire a, a grain bin tube that you put around somebody that's collapsed in grain. They cost $3,800, and we want to get a donation. So we don't want to pay any money here, we want to get a donation. I talked to Farm Bureau on the side last night to see if they can donate it, see if we can find a grant. But we do need a grain rescue tube in Notaway County. We do not have one. So just keep that in mind.
And it's one coming up Monday, too, correct?
That's right, and I think you'll be there.
In Blackstone.
So let's see if we can work with these people that we know.
What time was that? You remember?
I believe 7 o'clock.
Okay.
But let's work with these, these people at Farm Bureau and others and see if we can acquire one for Notaway. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff, do you have anything? You look like you're thinking intently back there. All right, I didn't see Ms. Wallace.
I'd like to mention something.
Sure.
When we were talking about the budget, looking for ways to, to cut, we asked the sheriff, do you have some positions that you can freeze? And he said, yes, we can get by. I know you're having a tough time. So I'd like to thank that department for raising his hand and saying, yeah, we can, we can help you out. So I appreciate it, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe he cut two dispatchers, well, froze two dispatchers and two deputies.
Yep.
I saw it was four.
Yes, four. Is that correct, Sheriff? Two dispatchers and two deputies, correct?
Oh, just three.
Three, okay, all right, okay.
They were gonna, they were cutting you again.
That's what it was, okay.
Right.
All right. Thank you, sir, for the correction.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir.
On the adoption of solar ordinance, sir.
All right, and many of y'all know, been working on the ordinance for several years, I guess it is. And the committee from the Planning Commission did a lot of hard work, did a lot of study. We felt like that we could do something that would kind of be a compromise, I guess you'd call it. If you look at our ordinance, and it says preserving Notaway County's rural character and fostering context sensitivity with regards to undesirable impacts on adjacent land use. County seeks to minimize solar energy facilities impacts on natural resources, including pollinator and wildlife habitats and existing agricultural, forestal, residential, commercial, industrial, historical, cultural, and recreational uses of property or the future development of such uses of property in the county. And the ordinance came up before the Planning Commission on April 16th, 2024. And the Planning Commission, at their regularly scheduled meeting, unanimously voted to recommend approval of the 2024 draft solar ordinance with the following changes. And there were a couple of things. One, we're gonna make the roads would be serviced with, would be surfaced with gravel. And the second thing was that waivers may be sought by the applicant to reduce the setbacks adjacent to a non-immediate family-owned parcel to no less than 500 feet. In the ordinance, it says, the project area shall be set back a distance of at least 800 feet from all public right of ways, 1,500 feet from a habitable dwelling, and a distance of at least 800 feet from adjacent property lines. And I think it's here somewhere, the idea is that a minimum setback of 800 feet is required on either side of a river within the project area of the identified site, and may be increased or decreased, dependent upon site topography. The other part of the ordinance, which I guess I'll have to find it, the ordinance calls that the maximum amount of solar panels that can be placed on a site is 40 acres. So you can have 40 acres under panel, you can have less, but no more. And with that, I think everybody's had a chance to see it. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the solar ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right, board members, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'd like to second it for a discussion.
That's fine. That's fine.
That's what it would be doing, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
We've heard a lot tonight, and I did have two citizens on Monday that I had not spoken to, I stopped to talk to them, and they talked about the fact that we've got to raise the taxes, and they understood that there was expense that, that had already come, that it's happened. The schools, you know, 800,000 over the last six years of this 48 cents, and then another 600. So we're, you know, the tax rate that we're looking at right now, 45 cents, is about $800,000, and just the schools is 1.2 million, and then we're hitting our general fund for another 1.2 million. And so they said, why would you not look at, if you're having to do this, and these expenses are there, why are you not talking about the revenue? And I felt that was a fair question, so. We've had a lot, some over here.
I, I would like to say, is that all you got, Mr. Collins?
That's it.
President. First, Mr. Ingram, I got a great respect for your thoughts on this solar.
I've been researching it ever since they threw that big project at me.
I think, I, I think that, first, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for the hours y'all put in it. One of the members on the Planning Commission told me, said, early on, he said, Bo, he said, suppose a farmer was enabled by the use of putting solar on a part of his real estate, was able to farm longer till things got better, till the next generation got old enough to farm, and then you had a county to say you can't do that, or you're limited to 40 acres, and here I am, got 600 acres, talking about this farmer that was talking to me, or using that analysis. I said, that's, that's, that's true. And the other part of that to me was me to say this, it's hard for me to tell somebody what they can and can't do on their property, and it's hard for somebody to tell me what I can and can't do, including hoghouses, that somebody may not like to smell, but I understand county's positions on trying to keep everybody happy and putting these big setbacks in place, but my personal feeling on the setbacks that has been put forth by the Planning Commission is much of the hoghouses. We don't, Notaway County don't want them. It's more or less the insight that I'm getting. Now, I get it, take it case-by-case basis, and depending upon the topography as to, and the fulfillment of these people who are doing it. You know, there's been some, some counties in the state that, that things wasn't fulfilled, obligations wasn't done by these people, these solar people, like water basins put in, for instance. But I think if the, if the state, if they had to follow the state guidelines, of which what would be water and soil conservation, DEQ, and oil, I think it can be managed, and I think it can be done in a lot less way than the Planning Commission that's recommended to this board. My first thought was, and has been my thought from 40 foot, it's, 40 acres is hard to tell somebody owns a thousand, you can't put but 40. But perhaps something could come up and say, well, if you got 1,000 acres, you can't go over 20% or 30%, you know? That would, that would be 200 acres, 20% on a thousand acre. If it goes right in the center, I wouldn't see it if it was right beside my place, if it was 1,000 acres, and it kept, now, and I'm talking about actual, we, we, I feel like the Planning Commission, and I want y'all's insight on it, as you have had, but I feel like the Planning Commission needs to take in consideration that we don't live, and hopefully never will, in a communist country thus far. Sir? I hope you're wrong. I hope you're wrong. But, so if I had gold, if you go to certain states in the country and they got gold on it, the, the government's got mineral rights even to their gold on their property, even to say you can't pump so much water out of your well to water your crop. They have, doing that right now in Idaho, there's 500,000 acres that the government stepped in and said, you can't pump it out to ground. What, what are we, what are we living into? Do I think solar is justifiable? Absolutely not, I do not. But I think it's justifiable, as we as a county board, not to be able to, to tell people what they can and can't do with their land to these restrictions here, because these is much like the hoghouses.
Well, I will say this, and, you know, you're talking about the county can't, we've got zoning ordinances right now that tell us what we can and cannot do with our property. We're talking about doing a blight ordinance, which is gonna be telling people, hey, you gotta do this to your property, or we're gonna seize your property. So we can't use that as an excuse.
I understand where you're coming from.
There's ordinances, and you have to follow those ordinances, and if you don't follow the ordinances, you're gonna be in trouble.
If you set the ordinances forth, so right now, Mr. Zody's setting that, a few years back, I sold a four-acre parcel off of a 40-acre parcel that had no road frontage. County required it to have, I think at that time, was 150-foot road frontage, being where it was, just outside of town of Blackstone, and application was fieldite, and it was granted. So if you, if, it's sort of like the law, Mr. Hawthorne, if you got this, but you can bend the rule a little bit, do you really have it, or do you have it for a select few? Do you have it for the big timber companies that don't live around here and let them get by with it, but working Bo Toth out here wants to put 50 acres on his 350 acres, nah, don't even come with that? You're kinda telling me what I can do with my land, just like pumping that water from it. Yeah, there's, there, there is certain ordinances that the county does have, just like I just mentioned, that road frontage, but there was no road frontage on it. Now, they took into consideration, it was a relative that needed some land to put a house on, to live, and they done the justifiable thing in granting the permission to do that. And I think we still should go by case-by-case basis, and we do, we do have a law of the land, no doubt, but I think as a county, rural county's responsibility and to keep it rural, I understand your feelings on taking it out of farmland. I got, I'm dealing with a big deal that I rent a farm in Lunenburg right now, that this fellow's cutting his timber because he's getting option money on 864-acre tract from the solar, and I didn't like it, but guess what? He asked me, he would've done whatever I told him, he's a mentor of mine, he said, what's your feelings on it? I said, my feeling is your land. It's legal for us to do it. I said, well, then you do it. Poor fellow over there cutting his timber in there prematurely. Fact of the matter is, he ain't no poor fellow, and that's the ones that want it the most. But still and all, he should have that right. I just think we need to, we need to go back to the Planning Commission and work a little closer in my feelings, and see if we can get something that, that makes it acceptable to the landowners who do, who do wanna do it, have some little bit easier setbacks, and still take it on a case-by-case basis. That's my opinion. Either three of y'all got opinions you'd like to state, or might along with.
I was gonna ask you, Mr. Toth, are you putting that in a competing motion?
Did it go back to the Planning Commission? I am.
Okay. There's a competing motion on the floor, and we would need a second.
Can I make a comment? You know, as I said, this has been going on for a while. Planning Commission spent a lot of time and energy on working on this. It's in the ordinance that you take them on a case-by-case basis, okay? The problem that I see is, the people who have come and spoke to us about solar were not residents of this county. They were big landowners, they lived in other counties, and they came to us saying, we want you to pass solar, and I have a problem with that. I can tell you this, I ride around the county, and I see the signs, Notaway, save Notaway, say no to industrial solar, it's out there. I have people come up to me, and, and I can be in the public anywhere, and they'll come up to me and say, you still fighting that solar? I said, yeah, I'm trying, and he said, they tell me, they said, please keep on doing it, we don't want it. We do not want it in our county.
I've had, I've had similar people to that. I will say this, I've had people come to me, and I do wanna put this out first, there's not one soul on this earth that I value more so than another soul about what they have.
Right.
About their, their wealth. So having said that, I wanted to say that upfront, anybody knows me knows that. The people that came in our position, which was four or five to me, was folks who came to Notaway, Notaway didn't have solar, but they only had five acres, so they know they not no options, they have no solar. One solar company came to me and wanted to put solar on my barn roof to give me electricity to lower my light bill in my house, but it was $130,000 to do it. I said, are you nuts? Well, you don't need to have that right now, we'll finance it to you. I said, so will a credit card, but I don't wanna do that. So the, it's not practical, and, and so for these people, yes, they are citizens, they're just as much resident as I am, as any one of us are, as any big timber owner is, who may not be a resident, but own land in Notaway, but they tend to voice it more because they have the five acres that may be next to the 100 acres that perhaps supplied for 40 acres of solar that can't be, and I respect them for that. I told, but, but I respect that person that has worked hard to acquire that land, to be able to do something with it if he wanted to do, especially if the man got into a, you know, we was talking about these taxes earlier, and I told one citizen that it's my hope that the board down the road somewhere can have a hardship for seniors, that they fill out an application, once the board get, and it be presented, and their taxes be lowered, just as if a farmer puts it in land use agricultural.
Right.
And there's that.
That, that's my hopes.
Yes, sir.
Well...
But it, but it's also my hopes that they can get, the hog, I wish I was a fellow sitting back here, when I was a little fellow, which I wasn't ever too little, I remember the county board coming with my daddy, and they used to make these hoghouses. Simply didn't want no hoghouses, they put these big setbacks, Notaway don't have a hoghouse. Not that I'd be forward, other than getting them fertilized out of it maybe for some crop field, but that was wrongly done.
All right, Mr. Toth, at this point.
That's all I, that's all I got.
Let me make one more statement. I was called by a gentleman from California that I was a solar hater. That's not true. If you wanna put them on your house, if you wanna put them on your barn, if you wanna put them on your place of business, that, I got no problem with that, because you're not really infringing on anybody else. But if you come and put 700 acres of solar panels next to me, I'm gonna go nuts.
Well, I think that's where that percentage, that the Planning Commission could revap this thing and come up with a, in working with the board and come up with and say if it's a thousand-acre track, I don't know what size track you got next to you, but if it's 1,000 acres, and, and they, and we, along with them, accept 20% to put 200 acres...
I don't think it needs to go back to planning, though. If this board wanted to make a couple of adjustments, we could do that.
It's a fluid document.
And have a, have a public hearing on our changes. Doesn't have to go back to planning.
Oh, it does not have to go back to planning.
I don't believe...
The other thing that I, Bo, I would like to mention, too, is that in the last month, month and a half, there are three counties that prior to this last month, month and a half, have solar, and they, those three counties rejected more solar.
I think it's four.
I know two of them.
Might be four. But if you look at that, that tells me something. That tells me something, they, they got second thoughts about what they did.
Well, I know, I know a farmer that sold 1,000 acres and sold, and he was totally against it, only 3,000 acres, and he let him put 1,000 acres on solar. And he's, he's happy, he got the money, but it tore the roads up around there about eight miles where, that the residents couldn't even get in and out over there.
Right.
That, that, therefore, I think, need to put a percentage cap on it to the, to the...
Recently, Interjects was, they're running seven different solar sites, and they were fined $158,000. And one of them is adjacent to my family farm down in Sussex County, in the Asmussick Swamp. They didn't even, this is what you're talking about, they didn't even put their storm basins in, they just cleared the ground. DEQ came and fined them. My concern is that you let companies in here that don't care, obviously didn't care, they'll pay the fine instead. Talking about Mr. Tatum over there on Lazaretto Creek, he wants to have a project. Crew's already had to shut their water off twice this year. Lazaretto Creek goes into Crystal Lake. Crew's already shut their water off twice. You get a, a company in there that doesn't care, doesn't put the storm water in, what's the, there's no unintended consequence there, there is a consequence, we know what's gonna happen, they're gonna silt up Crystal Lake, and go shut Crew's water off.
You're talking about the turbidity?
Yeah, the turbidity. So that's my concern.
And the other thing, the other thing is, we don't have enough, we're talking about budget, who are we gonna get to go and check on these things? DEQ doesn't have enough people.
What about the water and soil conservation people? What about some...
Well, I, my neighbor, look, my neighbor, my neighbor stood up at a meeting we had about solar, and he says, before it's put in, we can't help you. He said, after it's done, we can try to help you clean it up.
Oh, no, that, that's like an insurance company stepping over...
Well, that's what he told me.
...$100 bill to pick up a quarter.
All right. He said it right in the meeting.
Greg, would this have to go back to planning if we made the change?
No, sir, the only, in the, the only condition for someone to have to be, go back to the Planning Commission is if, in a rezoning case, you're to propose a more intensive use of what was originally proposed.
Not less restrictive.
Yes, so, and I wanna be very specific in my reference, so I can be corrected.
Hold on, Mrs. Zody, hang on, guys, procedure point here.
You got a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we got a motion, yeah, we got a motion on the floor, and I need to address that, it need a second to move forward, or either if we get no second, then the competing motion dies. So Mr. Toth has put a competing motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'm not, I'm confused why that's a competing note, motion, when he's the one who's second the first motion.
That's correct.
I seconded for a discussion, okay?
Right.
But it has to be seconded for a discussion.
He doesn't, if Mr. Zody's answer in regards to planning...
He can withdraw.
He can withdraw that, if it, if it doesn't have to go to planning, his motion was to go back to planning.
That was my, that was my...
But what I'm saying is, in order to move forward, if someone else could second this for continued discussion.
Second for competing?
Yeah, for continued discussion.
I'll second it for continued discussion, Mr. Zody.
Mrs. Zody.
Okay, excuse me. Section 15.2-225 of the state code, it's regarding preparation and adoption of zoning ordinance and map and amendments thereto, semicolon, appeal. Under this section, specifically section C, before approving and adopting any zoning ordinance or amendment thereof, the governing body shall hold at least one public hearing thereon, which we did with the, the board did with the joint public hearing back in February. Pursuant to public notice as required by statute 15-2-2204, which talks about the advertising and whatnot, public notice, after which the governing body may make appropriate changes or corrections in the ordinance or proposed amendment. And the part I mentioned before was, however, no land may be zoned to a more intensive use, which is not relevant in this case. So, you know, it's, I think it's pretty clear, you know, the Planning Commission has already, they've taken public comment, they held a, well, they took, held a public hearing with the board, they deliberated for two months, maybe three months, I think, on this, and now it's before y'all, and as I read it, my plain reading of it, is that you can make appropriate changes or corrections in the ordinance or proposed amendment. However, I would add, that'd probably be in the interest of the public to advertise for that, if we make substantial changes.
Mr. Toth, does, does that answer any questions? Do you wish your motion to stand, sir?
No, I'd like to withdraw my motion, and I'd, I'd like to, I mean, withdraw my second to the, to the motion. Am I correct in saying that?
You're, you had a competing motion.
Well, my, my motion was to send it back to the Planning Commission. After finding out that that does not need to take place, I would like to withdraw that motion.
Okay. All right, that motion, the competing motion is now off the table, ladies and gentlemen. So we're, we're back at discussion point for the initial motion. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to comment, and I've had a number of calls, and, and all the meetings we seem to have, the majority do not want solar. They especially don't want 2, 3, 400 acres of solar. But in that respect, too, those that small acreage, 40 acres, and they've done their due diligence, and it doesn't have environmental impact, this is so restrictive, they can't do that. So what, what, 'cause I haven't been following this as close as other things, what can we do to make it less restrictive for the smaller, without just squashing it totally? Because the way it's written now with the setbacks, nobody can do it.
No, not legitimately.
All right, so to maybe answer part of your question, Ms. Norton, is that any of these ordinances are living, breathing documents, and we can bring them, whether we need to hold these meetings or, and then we can also, with the ordinance on the book, they can bring their applications, and they can ask for exceptions, they can ask for, you know, whatever they wanna ask for on those, and the board can consider it or kill it.
I have that...
So that opens the door to smaller solar, because I'm like Mr. Toth, telling people what they can do on their land bothers me.
Right.
I, I was told something previously that we could make it more restrictive, but not less restrictive, under ordinance. So if somebody came to us and said, all right, I wanna do 40 acres, we'll meet your 40-acre So, if somebody came to us and said, "All right, I want to do 40 acres," we'll meet your 40 acre requirement, "But I've only got 250 feet on this side, I've got 300 on this side, and I got 400 on that side." Can the board, based on, based on dimension and photography, can we make adjustments to the setbacks based on the application? I don't think anybody here wants, wants Dickerson Creek.
No, I don't think so.
And that, that has been withdrawn.
And that's been withdrawn, that's, there was a letter received, that project been, been withdrawn by Soli Nuska. So, that's the question. How much, how much, do we have to put a couple sentences in here that says the board supervisor has discretion?
Yes. I would, I would say yes, but again, I'm not, I'm not counseling that.
Well, can we move it to, can we put it to the side until we consult with our county attorney?
If it starts and says, "The board supervisor has discretion in all matters in regards to application."
I would, I would recommend-
Yeah, okay, we can put that, so you want that verbiage?
Do you want to limit?
A work session. I should, I should say that. And I do want to point out for the, for Mr. Collins, or I'll wait.
Because they get a flight fee.
See, we, we, this was presented to, to us from the planning commission. And if we want to change language to it, then perhaps it needs to go to a specific work meeting.
Yes.
Can, can we do, can I make a motion to move this to a work session meeting for further discussion and do we have to advertise that?
Well, that's not a public hearing. We can put that on-
It'll just be our regular work session.
You can put it on a work session, so you don't need a motion.
But then after that, do we have, do we, do we have to have a public hearing?
Only if you're doing, uh, I think, a massive amount of changes to this.
Or is that something we need to ask county attorney?
The, the conservative side of me, which is very small, would probably recommend that we consult with our attorney. Yes, sir. I think to be on the safe side. But I do want the board and the public to know that when someone brings us, it's not just gonna be just an application. They have, they're, they'll be going for a special exception. Special exceptions by code, our code, have 37 criteria, criteria they have to meet. Most of the time, it's, you know, really basic for like, you know, if someone wants to put a manufactured home in the Conservation Residential District or residential, they have to go through that process, which I'm gonna eliminate personally. But we have criteria in there. And second to that is that we have language in this draft ordinance that gives the county the ability to hire somebody such as a stormwater management specialist to go and check on the, you know, check them for required.
We, we preface DEQ by doing something like that.
Right, but they, right, but they are so, and I can speak from all the years I've been working in the Commonwealth, they are stretched more far apart, I mean, just they're stretched across a huge region. I mean, multiple counties, they might have two or three people there, but it's like four or five counties. And they only have staff, you know, and it's, it's not, it's not on DEQ.
And that's what happened down in Sussex County.
What about the water and soil conservation people?
They, uh-
Like I said, they, they can't do anything until it's put up.
Right.
And then they come, they can come in and try to help you fix it.
Sussex just declined a big project, had 49 entrances.
Yeah, that's-
4,000 acres, and this is right after Interjects just paid fines.
And we can hire somebody.
The citizens said, "No, we're done."
And, so- I, I get that. I honestly get that as an administrator.
But we talking about not hiring nobody now. You talking about hiring somebody? No.
Well, no.
Maybe the generator didn't come here.
The one time I'll disagree with Mr. Toth, um-
I think it gives somebody else a job we already got hired. Maybe they ain't got nothing to do.
No, but what, what we can do in the zoning ordinance-
Work session.
Motion, so you made a motion to go to a work session?
No, 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 no. It's going to a work session.
So, it's going, we don't have to make a motion?
No.
And Dickey's motion dies?
No, Dickey's motion is on the floor.
On the floor.
Even though you second it for, uh, discussion, unless you withdraw your second, this is going to a roll call vote.
I would, I would like to withdraw my second.
Okay. Board members, there's still a motion on the floor. Does someone else want to second the motion? I will step outside of our rules of procedure. If y'all allow me, I'll second this motion for a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, so what the, the roll call vote is, I'll make sure that the motion to accept the so, the solar ordinance is, that the planning commission has completed, that's, I didn't say-
That's a motion.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call. Um, Mr. Collins, what's your vote?
Nay.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Nay.
Ms. Norton?
Nay.
Mr. Roak?
Yes.
Mr. Roak, we have three nays and two yeses. The motion has been killed.
All right, moving on. Um, the animal shelter, uh-
Okay.
Yes, the animal shelter update.
Mr., I know it's got Mr. Ingram's name, he can hime in if he wants to. So, just so you know that, um, July 1st, I've tried to copy on some of the verbal, because I mean, the written discussions that have been going on. Mr. Elder, I guess some negotiations will be our, uh, county attorney. And I spoke to him today and he asked me, "When will we like to finish this paperwork with Doc, with Jack Boswell?" And I said, "As soon as possible, but July 15th, if you get it done, hopefully that building's gonna be ours." Okay?
Good deal.
All right.
All right, the MOU with the school.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's, uh, let me catch up with you guys here. Uh, 3. So, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, that's the MOU with the schools that was, uh, we do not have a signed MOU. I, I reached out to Dr. Grimes and also Heather. We do not have a signed MOU. So, I thought, how, what is the meat and potatoes of this MOU in the first place? The idea was, the thought was that we were supposed to start paying monthly appropriation, like if we owe them $6 billion, we were gonna pay monthly, okay? And I got Ms. Barton still here, so she can hime in if she, if she feels free to. But if you look at 4B, it says, and I think that's where they thought that local was supposed to be. It says, "To the extent permitted under applicable law, starting on October 1st, on the first day of every month, BOS, that's us, will directly transfer any and all school funds that it receives from state or federal entity or third party." None of it says anything about local. But, um, so I have met with Ms. Meyer, their financial director, and I don't really know if we need a MOU, if the board just gives me direction of doing that. What other funds we owe them, and it's going back into, that gentleman has spoken there before about when you reconcile, now reconciliation, if you divide it by 12, you're gonna give them a check on, in June. They, that, that gets, that puts them in a bind. In other words, we didn't need to divide it by 11 and that may, may as our last payment. So, you just give me direction to do that. I don't see where we have, why can't we just say, "Hey, county administrator, we, we want you to, whatever we owe them for, ADM, whatever it is, well, I think, I don't know, it's here somewhere $6 billion and some dollars, divided by 11, and the first payment is July, in July. And then, and the last payment would be May."
Well, why don't you do that administratively?
Okay, all right. So, I just, I don't see no need for MOU if y'all okay with that. Unless you want that, we can, we probably can develop it with a joint meeting with the, with the finance people. Okay, yeah, and that's the verbal that we have, right, that's right.
I don't think you need an MOU.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on as business, as consider that as an agreement, okay?
All right. Ms. Norton, on the delinquent tax advertisement?
Yes, we had discussed this at a prior meeting and what happened was they used the, the collection rate from the audit, which was 92%. That was not correct. And we currently have a 97.67% collection rate. You're never gonna get 100% collection rate. So, we had discussed re-advertising, putting it in the paper, but after talking to the treasurer and several, and I want to know your thought, I don't see any need for us to print and spend thousands of dollars to advertise for 3%.
All right, just, just from my personal knowledge, Ms. Norton, so the, uh, the numbers that was presented to us was inaccurate, is that correct?
They were, they were accurate from the audit. That's what they used from the audit.
Think that was December?
Yes. And, and so if you go back, and Ms. Rayford has started including in our packet, with her packet, the percentage of collection rate, and, and currently is 97.67%. That's phenomenal.
Well, if you gotta tighten your belt, I'm fine with not doing this. That's up to y'all. What do y'all want to do?
No, I, you, no need to. No need to.
Oh, Mr. Ingram?
I'm good. We should not.
Okay. All right, on to new business, SRO grants.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, that's J1 in your, in your package. If you look at that, this has to be approved by the, the board. Basically, um, the school system, uh, they have, they have SROs in the Crew Prime, Crew, Crew Primary, Blackstone Primary, and Nottaway Intermediate School. They have also applied for a new position. So, with those grant, with that grant money as, as of right now, the total local match was $124,952. But what they're asking is, can they, they want another, they need to apply for another high school SRO. I think I'm saying that correct, Sheriff?
Yes, sir, yes. That was the SRO position that I was talking about, possibly not building.
Okay.
Save, save on the budget. Uh, the two dispatch position I hadn't built yet, and the SRO one, that particular one we got the grant for. I don't have to fill it at this point.
And that was, that would have been a six, a six one. So, all I need from the board, if y'all would make a motion to approve the five and not the six, we would be hitting in the direction, and every school would have one SRO.
All right, I only got one question.
Yes, sir.
Just so I can say that we asked this question. Without this, are our children safe?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I need. All right, board members, what's your pleasure?
I did have one question for the sheriff. Could you, so we have five.
Yes, sir, we have one in each school.
We always need to be aware that as grants expire, that becomes a county position. You were successful, I believe.
Yes, sir, we were successful. Two, we had two that expired this year.
So, are they kind of a rolling, you know, they don't all expire the same year?
No, sir, no, sir.
So, it's possible that you'll be able to continue that through the grant programs to keep these positions.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Every time I can't apply for it, I will.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Sheriff.
All right, board members, Mr. Bowen had a suggestion for a motion to approve the five grants. Is, uh-
I'll make that motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Sheriff, if you would hang there, Sheriff, if you would hang there just for a little more sec, for a second, please. Carryover request from the sheriff's office. Basically, what they're ask, what he's asking is, um, to utilize some of his vacancy savings, I guess, if needed be for part-time help or overtime, is what I'm, what I'm seeing. Because if he, he does have some vacancies and with parts of freezing, there's a possibility he may need some, some people to work over to, to meet the public safety across the county, so.
And so there's, he's got funds in this budget this year.
Correct. And he's asking to carry some of that over. Right. And, and that's, and that's a, let me back up too, and I want to say this with Ms. Norton and, and Mr. Ingram. One thing we've talked about and, and we need to, and I think Ms. Norton actually had mentioned it, we need a carryover policy. You know, sometimes like this, it's okay, but maybe a carryo, you know, you got a carryover grant money, you gonna see some carryover about in a few minutes with the library that makes sense to you, but not, not carryover money to give somebody a, a larger salary.
Or bonus.
A bonus or something like that.
Right.
But anyway, but we, we need to-
You need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
A lot of times, carryover is signified and, or specific to saving for capital improvement, like this course.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I'll make a motion for the sheriff to receive his carryover funds that were unspent from this fiscal year.
A second.
All right, now for discussion, board members, is there an amount?
In the-
Uh, if you add all those up, I didn't add them, Mr. Norton, uh, Mr.-
It's about $25,000 and something like that.
Of not more than $25,000.
The biggest, the biggest one, Mr. Chairman, is the, the second one that says sheriff's salary, vacant savings, line item. And that, that line item is what you see in bright, is the amount of $17,000, is what he's asking, to be able to utilize those funds.
Okay, all right.
Oh, Ms. Graham's here also. Ms. Graham actually wrote the email.
There you go.
And, you know, and it says, at the top it says Steve Bowden something, but anyway, I didn't fuss at her about that.
Bound.
Bound.
Steven.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Graham.
Could have been worse.
Call him Stevie B.
Make it a work over, what do you want from me?
Anyway, is that, did I say that right, Ms. Graham? I translate that right?
Uh, yes, so $17,000 for the part-time funds and then the rest of it is grant carryover.
Okay. All right, well, that was the only question I had. Anybody got a question?
Ms. Graham, thank you for being the sheriff's right on and doing all this for him.
And I, and I'll say she's helped the office when we, when we, she's offered plenty of times and she's helping me with a, a grant and different things too, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
All right, well, board members, there's your motion and seconds on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? There you go.
I knew you'd do, Sheriff.
All right.
That's good, thank you.
Your VHR, EDA goals?
Mr. Chairman, that's just the goals. We had, we had a kickoff meeting, uh, May 23rd, I think it was. Anyway, that, that's, if, and it's, those things, that's a living document. If you feel like we left something out with the goals, this is where all the counties are getting together for the Virginia Heartland Regional Economic Development Alliance. I think the key measurements is what's really, it really catches out. The key part, the key, the key of this whole thing is hire a new executive director that fits South Side, Virginia.
Where Ms. Melanie Foster and Mr. Fortune are going in?
Yeah, well, this is, this is a spinoff off of CRC. So, anyway, but yeah, but, so just know that, that, I don't even know what the bylaws and, and is it gonna be possible? I'm gonna need a board member from each, we haven't got that far yet. So, this, this group is just getting started, but anyway. I just want y'all be aware of it for information purposes.
The SVCC appointment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I understand that we have a vacancy from Nottaway County on the SVCC board and I would like to nominate Dr. Joey Hurt to fill that vacancy.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to nominate Joey Hurt to the SVCC appointment. Uh, can I get a second on that?
Go second it.
All right, and just for clarification, Mr. Toth, would you like to know what SVCC stands for? Because I would too.
I think I know what that stands for, Mr. Chairman, but it's only one of few that I do. And I think Dr. Joey Hurt would be a spectacular choice for that position.
All right, board members, there it is. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the opioid resolution, Mr. Bowen.
I don't know whatever. All right, Mr. Chairman, I didn't really, we've, I really didn't hit a, hit a dead end here. But let me finish this one up, if you don't, if you would bear with me. I think we skipped something. Mr. Chairman, J5, the opioid resolution, that's the resolution. Just what has happened is Kroger has been added to the ones who owe money. If you look at 123rd paragraph of this resolution, it's a settlement proposal that's been negotiated with the cause Kroger to pay over $1 billion nationwide to resolve opioid related came, claims against it. So, I just need a resolution to say we will, we will be part of when Kroger sends money to.
All right, has that, is that resolution?
Yeah, that's the one that you possibly would sign here. The board has to approve this resolution.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, if we could back up to G6, we, and I should have caught it. I know we were going pretty fast there, once the public hearing was over. So, G6 is, um-
The public library.
Yeah, the, the library. And what she's asking about the carryover money, uh, this is another example, and I haven't got a chance to talk to the finance committee about this. What I'm, what, she's, what, what is, this, this carryover is an example of, this is donations, and those donations are earmarked for, uh, for the, where is it, the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. She's asking, "I would appreciate you carrying over $5,059.82." I would ask you to make the motion of approving, approving that not to exceed $5,059.82. And the reason why I'm saying that, don't say exact, our numbers are showing she's got $4,000 something there, but she's saying she's got $5,000. I, I could not get that rectified before the meeting, so.
You said $50.59.82.
Yeah, yeah, $50.59.82.
All right, board members, y'all heard with, Mr. Bowen was sharing there, is there a motion to approve the carryover not to exceed $5,059.82?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, J6 is the employee recognition.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I truly just, just left it, to keep my mouth shut, I hid it from myself. And I had to find it.
I know.
Anyway, and so I, I looked through the office right before the meeting and I found it under, um, I don't know, old bag of potato chips, I think. But anyway.
I was a big bag of potato chips.
So, anyway, I'm gonna leave it up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, normally the, the chairman would present this, but, uh, Mr. Bowen, you work day to day with this individual. I think the world of this individual.
Right.
And, uh, I, I think it would be more appropriate that you give this to her with my blessing.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. County of Nottaway certificate of commendation presented to Andrew Kelly in recognition of five years of service to the County of Nottaway and its citizens as administrative assistant, who I refer to as my deputy recorder.
Ms. Kelly, may you, will you please come forward here and see this?
So, I need to know, did you know that it was happening?
No, I didn't.
Well, good, I hid it from you. It was hard. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, we got 10 o'clock.
If you, um-
Oh, that's three hours.
If you, if you notice, Ms. Kelly's been great, helped me in little small projects. I had a citizens who, a citizen who donated a tobacco, some tobacco plants, because I think that's part of our roots here in Nottaway County. And we had planted them right there in front of, uh, the administrative building and, and, and she has been up there at night making sure they water, because we got this big drought, and I, I hate it for those plants, but they look good. Take a look at them.
That's right.
Anyway, some people don't know what a tobacco plant looks like, but, and some people wish they could forget about it.
Yeah. Okay, before we move forward, our rules of procedure require we do a roll call vote as we are now at the three hour time. Mr. Bowen, will you roll call the vote to whether or not they wish to continue with tonight's meeting?
Yes, sir. Mr. Collins, are you willing to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram, you willing to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Toth, you willing to continue?
Yes.
Ms. Norton, you willing to, and Mr. Roak, are you willing to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, five o to keep moving on.
Thank you. On the consent calendar, if there's any questions, um, under the May expenditures or the budget adjustment, if not, we need a motion to accept, um, the, uh, the consent, uh, item. or the budget adjustment, if not, we need a motion to accept the, the consent items as presented.
I'll make that motion?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The correspondence items are in your packet. Do y'all have any items under the correspondence items that you wish to speak on? Okay. All right. Administrator's report.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just a few things to talk about. I just, I did, just sent y'all an, an email. Do not respond to it. It's not a meeting, but I just want y'all to, to know the communication that I had with TRC, of trying to get him up here as a work session. That was like pulling teeth. And it, and it also to interfere with other things, I just want you to know that. Mr. The chairman of the school board, he, he put his hat on. He, sometimes he takes it off, other times, Mr. Abbott. We want to line up that walkthrough that we promised the school system to take a look at the schools. It looks like they gave us two choices, the week of July eighth and the week of July twenty-second. July eighth, I didn't have, we, I'm not planning to be here, but I thought July twenty-third is a Tuesday, July twenty-second is a Monday, and of course, July twenty-fourth is a Wednesday. And I thought maybe the twenty-third, if I can line that up, so you can look at the schools. Is that a possible?
I'm, I'm good. I'm good. I can do that too, Steve, if, if the others.
I'm, I'm available.
Okay. Anyway, I think, I think what they want to show the schools, and they showed the, you know, some of the capital aid projects that they're looking at, and, and we had promised them that we would take a look at some of that and, and see some of the challenges they're going through.
So that'll be a school tour July twenty-third.
Right. And then I will start getting that lined up. And I, and Mr. Ms. Kelly, I, that board will be together. We'll have to advertise that, correct?
Yes.
That's right. Okay. All right. All right.
I answered for her.
Also, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. It's fine. The other thing that we, that I'm working on is that I got a invitation from the Prince Edward County Administrator, Doug Stanley. He wants to have a meeting with the chairman and, and, and the vice chairman too, if that's possible, with Kristy Hudson and myself about the bounty line adjustment. And so the, and I take it, we might have to take a trip to Prince Edward. So looking at some, maybe the last week in July. And that's, 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 this is kind of things that I'm trying to schedule. It's hard to put them all together.
All right. Is the twenty, well, that's the last week of July.
What is it?
It's a short week, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one.
Right. So twenty-nine, thirty. So thirty would be the Tuesday, John.
Are you, are you available on the thirtieth?
On the thirty? I am.
Okay. So anyway, so that, I want y'all to know that that's, and one of the board members that you and I are very familiar with, he said that, he said, I think Prince Nottaway is gonna be pleasantly surprised. So, but we'll have to see. We have to see. All right. Ms. Walters took the time to, Commonwealth Attorney took the time to go to the courtroom, the circuit court, and showed me some of the problems that, that, that you run into trying to have a case, have a trial there. Bo and, Mr. Toth and, excuse me for calling you that.
Bo was fine with that.
Bo and, and Bill was up here one day, and they took a look at it. And, and so if the, and I try to get, I want all the board to understand some of the challenges with an old courthouse. But anyway, if, 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 if Mr. and Ms. Norton and Mr. Chairman Roach and, and Mr. Ingram, if y'all are interested, I can try to get her to line that up sometime or another. I'm not, I'm not throwing a date at you yet, but she really, she really walked it through with me, and, and I probably missed a whole lot there with, trying to show Mr. Toth and, and Mr. Collins that.
I'm sure that was a productive meeting.
Yeah, it was very...
I'll go as long as I'm visiting, not...
It was, it was really unplanned. It just kind of fell right in place.
It just fell right.
Sort of like the other meeting.
I know how that goes with you.
Yeah.
You know that, yeah.
The, the board gave me direction to, to touch bases with the Econ, Industrial Development, IDA Authority, Industrial Development Authority, because that's, if we build the animal shelter, and that is the hopes, I mean, renovate the building to an animal shelter, that we may have to borrow money from the IDA. And so I'm trying to get that group back together. It was six, it needs to be seven members. And I called, I've called every, every member in the past and the present. I have not done a second call for the people who did not respond. But right now, Tony Ellett is in arrest and helping, Dennis McCarthy, I think he's District Five, Tony's District One, and Bob Timberlake, who's District Three. So the other four people have not responded to me. And I think part of it is, to be on the IDA, you have to, you have to do a...
Financial.
Financial statement. And some people, they, they think that's their business, and they rather not, I was gonna say. But give me, give me a couple more weeks to see if I can talk to these other people. And, and, and I'll call you maybe and say, maybe you got an in way of, you know, maybe they don't want to respond right now. I don't, I don't know. But it all depends when you, how you catch people. If, if like my dad, he'll call you back six weeks later when he was living, you know, but he didn't forget. The, we have a, I, Mr. Roach and I had a conversation, it was real quick, in one of our work sessions. And I asked, I asked John, I said, John, make sure I got it right. If, he's off on Tuesdays, and, and Bill, and Bo, and I know you, you, you're stuck on Wednesdays. And what John was telling me is, if, if it's a night meeting, he rather not do it on a Tuesday, because that's your only day off. But if it's a day meeting, you, you'll get there, even if it's your day off.
Yes. If I'm, if, if, yes, if, if I'm off at, at all on a Tuesday, then not going and getting to something, because I still love my wife.
Yeah, right. That's right. Family first. Family first. So, so what I'm, what I'm thinking is, we'll do it, because we got to get a work session, because Ms. Norton was telling me, we got to get a work session, Steve, before the meeting. So we'll shoot for Mondays sometime. So, but let me, let me look at the calendars and get that straight and send you something out, okay? But I just want you to know, I just, you know, we're trying to make sure everybody's participating and still have a home life. All right. Very shortly, after we get this budget through, I need to get the HR committee back together for a meeting, and, and I'll start getting some facts together. I just mentioned that White Elder, Gary Elder will be our lawyer come July first. I've notified Sands Anderson, and Sands Anderson will come, help us finish some of the lawsuits that they're in the middle of. And then they were very gracious and said, hey, if you need something for a quick turnaround, send us something, and, and we'll help you out any way we can.
Mr. Bowen, if you don't mind, when you said HR committee, you mean personnel?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Right. Because I was gonna say, if there is two, why wouldn't we combine?
When I was growing up, you called it personnel, then somebody called it human resources, and I apologize.
Okay. All right.
But good catch. The last thing is, very soon, I, I need to, and I'll get that, I mentioned this to y'all a while back. I have got to get Nick Bowles, I need to appoint Nick Bowles as ADA coordinator. We're supposed to have a thing called ADA coordinator for the American Disability Act. And, and that's what, and I want to share this with, with the, I do want to share this. I've had some conversations with Judge Tiffey, and, and this, this is kind of, well, when you got an old courthouse, this is what happens. You, we don't have a, we don't have a handicap ramp on the circuit, on this, on the circuit court. Okay. So they had a jury, a juror who was in a wheelchair, and then they had to put them on the same elevator that the inmates, if, if you got an inmate coming in that's on trial. Okay. So they got to take the inmate, put them in, make sure that's completely separate, bring this, the jury in on, in a wheelchair, put them on the elevator, and then try to get them in a jury box, which is not, doesn't fit a wheelchair. So there's a, there's a dignity issue there that I, that's just, that's just part of things that you'll hear from LeAnn Walters when you have a conversation. Okay. So anyway, I just want to share that with you. And that's, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your patience, and that's my report. And I appreciate all, all the hard work all of y'all have been in helping me also. So thank you.
Patience, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Comments from the board members. Vice Chairman Collins?
I do. I have a resolution of appreciation. This is for a longtime member of our Planning Commission, and this is also letting you know that District Five needs a replacement on the Planning Committee. Resolution of appreciation. Whereas Hugh S. Jones was first appointed to the Nottaway County Planning Commission in September two thousand, assumed his role as a Planning Commission member in October two thousand, and served continually through April twenty twenty-four. And whereas he distinguished himself through twenty-four years of dedication towards helping to build a better community for all citizens by taking the time to hear from residents regarding specific issues and concerns. Whereas owner and operator of a generational dairy farm, Richland's Dairy Farm, he always valued the role of agriculture in our local economy and the preservation of the county's rural character. And whereas, in the opinion of this commission, that his dedication towards sound, fair, and transparent government will long be remembered. Now therefore, be it resolved on this day of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, by the Nottaway County Planning Commission and Nottaway County Board of Supervisors, that Hugh S. Jones is hereby commended for his outstanding service to the citizens of Nottaway County.
Hey, yeah.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Hugh.
Twenty-four years.
Lot of service, Al.
And then I, oh, just as a supervisor, a month ago, I asked for people to come to this room. And we had eight, I think, and two people signed up to speak, one of them spoke. So tonight, everybody came, and I appreciate it. We can't make decisions if, if nobody talks to us. So thank you.
All right. If I may, piggybacking off of what you said about Hugh.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a wonderful celebration. Tell him we are willing to come down and accept the ice cream social.
I have ice cream social.
I'm kidding, of course.
Is that why you want him to tell him that you don't tell him?
I'm kidding, of course.
Yes, but we will go, won't we?
There you go. All right. Mr. Ingram?
I'm like Mr. Collins. The more input we get from the citizens about our job, we can do. We appreciate what everybody said today. I hope everybody listen to us and tell us what we're facing. We know it's hard to raise taxes. I, I just told y'all how much mine are going up, just on my house. So it, it's a difficult situation. And if there was any other way, we would have done it. And I don't know where we'll eventually end up with the rate. You know what I'm saying? We cannot go up. We can only go down. So I guess we'll have a discussion next week, and we'll, you know, talk about what we can do and how we can take care of the people of Nottaway County.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. And Ms. Ms. Norton?
Again, reiterated, we appreciate the citizen voices tonight. That's what we want to hear. We were elected to serve, not sit, but we need your input. And I appreciate Mr. Bowen asking me to chair that committee. It's been a tremendous challenge, but it's been a learning curve. We've got a multitude of intricate details to go through. But I say that too, that I have lived it in, in Nottaway County my entire life, sixty-one and a half years. And I would no way, shape, or form ever want to do anything that desecrates the citizens here. We are working with what we have. We hear your voices tonight, and we're gonna meet, and we're gonna continue this process. With that said, I do encourage everybody, even though it's gonna be hot, to attend Juneteenth Celebration this Saturday down in Blackstone, and also remind our board members that we need to RSVP, per, reiterating, Mr. Bradshaw, the Spring Hill one hundred and eightieth in July. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Toth?
A job that, that you enjoy, you tend to love. And I've not loved this job of being on the board. I've liked it. But with dealing with such as budget and tax increase, and that makes me not have the love for it, but somebody's got to do it. I hear people express their concerns, and I feel what they say. And many of them will say, no, he, he probably don't, but I promise you, I do. I, I, if you don't know me, if you know me, you know I do. But having said that, we're gonna try to move the county forward in a more, I don't even like to use this word, transparent way, that we can all know what's going on, and we don't get blindsided. I think, I'm not gonna blame, I'm not gonna kick the can on the old board and say all of it's their fault. You know, if, if you allow some certain things to be done to you, they'll do it. And maybe they just didn't stand up as hard as me. I'm gonna speak, I'm gonna speak my mind. It may get me put in jail, but I'm gonna still tell it. You'll hear me before I go to jail. And that's why I want everybody to do, to talk to me. I want you to tell me how you feel, how you think. You, I'm no more of a resident of this county than, than the next man is. And we're gonna get through this, and I might be afraid we're gonna raise your taxes. I ain't gonna tell you a lie. That's one thing I won't do to you, lie to you. I, I, I'm not gonna lie to you. But I appreciate the vote, the folks who voted for me. I hope I'm as enthusiastic next four years as I was to run this previous four. But then I got to get some more, more enthusiasm to me to do, to be there, because I have not gotten it yet. Yeah, I feel like we've been very productive in moving forward. This board works good, really good together. We, we can tend to tell how we feel about one another, hopefully without hurting each other's feelings. Might do some bodily expressions at times, but that's okay, too. So having said that, that'll be all I got. Mr. Chairman?
Well, thank you, Mr. Toth. And ladies and gentlemen, as, as always, like, has been spoken here tonight, this is y'all's government, regardless of who you sit in this seat. Anybody go fill out that application, get on a ballot, and hold these seats. What others have done, or, like, like you said, you're, you're not looking to assign any blame, and that's the appropriate thing to do. Everybody that has sat in these seats have been elected, whether you agreed with what they've done or not. But at the end of the day, we are now tasked with this, and we will fix this. And as far as the way this board communicates, any lacking that we may have, we'll fix. Over the past few days, my frustration of hearing what's, what we wanted to hear at the public hearing, boiled over, and to quote a wonderful man, we're sponges and we can only absorb so much. And with that said, Ms. Norton, if I offended you, please accept my sincere apology. And moving, moving forward, I will, I will try to be better to keep my motions in check, because one of the things I have always talked about is decorum and civility. And I lost sight of that. It, it, it's gotten a hold to me. But at the end of the day, we're tasked with this, and we're gonna find a way to work through it. And, but I tell y'all this, if you've got an elected body that never bumps head, you ain't got, you ain't got elected body. You got a good old boy system.
I was gonna read the voting.
So, that's right. So with that said, board members, I appreciate everything y'all do. The staff, I love the staff. I love the staff. Y'all come on, get you some ice cream at the meet and greet in Burke. My treat. And at this point, I need a motion to adjourn until June twenty-seventh at seven PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. We don't adjourn.
Are we continuing?
We're continuing the meeting.
Yeah.
Andrew, have we advertised for the twenty-seventh? Okay. So you just adjourned then.
Okay.
And we'll see you seven o'clock, just so the public knows, seven o'clock.
On the twenty-seventh.
On twenty-seventh, and that's all. Sorry about that.
All right. So, so board members, I would ask that, Ms. Norton, will you withdraw your motion?
Yes.